Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of the Committee of the Whole and the Race Equity Subcommittee. I'm going to call these committee meetings together to order for Wednesday, June 27. With me at the dais today are council members Palmasano, Johnson, Goodman, Ellison, Worsame, Schrader, President Bender. To my right is Councilmember Cunningham, Fletcher, and Reich. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum of the Minneapolis City Council and said committees. Colleagues, we have two items on our Race Equity Subcommittee agenda today. In addition, after we have completed those items, the Committee of the Whole will consider a walk-on item from the city attorney regarding the joining of an amicus brief. And before we begin our regularly scheduled committee meetings, I want to add an agenda item that we have public comment, period, related to the really tragic and painful information that we have been learning about, related to the Minneapolis Police Department over the past several weeks, as well as the most recent incident involving a police-involved shooting of Mr. Thurman Blevins. And so, before we open up public testimony, and I do want to state that please sign in if you intend to speak, there is a sign-in sheet with the clerk, and if you would like to have an opportunity to testify, we urge you to sign in. We'll have a 30-minute period of public comment, limiting those comments to two minutes per speaker. And before we begin the public comments, I would like to invite Ms. Brittany Lynch to the podium, and she is going to share some really heartfelt words in the form of poetry. Welcome, Ms. Lynch.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany Lynch, or Brittany Wright now, and I am going to share a piece I wrote about three years ago in response to police brutality, prior to me getting married or conceiving a child. These were just my thoughts as a woman who's constantly having to face this trauma, and it's called Black Friday. "To the mother of Emmett Till, we will never stop showing his face. To the mother of Trayvon Martin, we will never forget his name. To the mother of Terrence Franklin, we stand with you in this race. And to the mother of Mike Brown, your son's life has value, even on Black Friday. I heard a statistic that said black women control 41% of the buying power in the United States. I'm not sure if that still stands true, but it makes sense. With arms wide enough to hold only a few shopping bags, we carry the needs of everyone else with us: medicine for our parents, food for our siblings, clothes for our relatives, and if we have the physical and emotional capacity to carry anything else, then maybe, but not always, something for ourselves. See, as a woman of color, I've gotten so accustomed to taking care of everyone else that self-care has become a revolutionary byproduct of my defiance. I've gotten so used to looking after the needs of others that even in my time to myself, I daydream of being a mother and taking care of someone else. Store visits spark thoughts of embryonic responsibility, and I wonder if my baby will look like his dad or if she'll be a smaller version of me, and so I go into stores and I get excited to shop, seeing Nike signs on cute little baby shops, and I love those little jeans. And I think to myself, when I become a mom, I'm going to get a pair just like this with a matching hoodie." And that's when it dawned on me that, as a black woman, it doesn't matter the color of the person that I choose to recreate with, my children will always be black and always be seen as dangerous because of that fact. And in an instant, my daydreams of motherhood turned into my nightmare of the black experience. I was daydreaming of the day when they put the machine up to my stomach and I'd hear a heartbeat, but instead, all I could hear were gunshots. I had daydreams of labor pains and contractions, not doing the math, when the police's plan was to divide and conquer them. Encore performances at my baby's recital, and the only song I can ever seem to hear is "Amazing Grace." My daydream turned into a nightmare, not knowing if I would be showing off pictures of my kid at the gym or my baby's obituary. Wanting nothing but the best for my baby, I go onto the internet to do research, and I don't know if I should look up the best montours or the best mortuaries. And I know it sounds morbid, but with every unpunished murder of a black child, black man, black woman, black person, it's like I miscarry. Another child is dead, and I don't get to see the fruits of my labor, and as much as I want to be optimistic, the odds aren't exactly in my favor. I've seen one too many black children treated like animals, either hunted in the streets or locked in cages. I mean cells. Pardon me if I'm being politically incorrect. Pardon me if my hashtag for Black Lives Matter offends you. Let me explain: All lives matter, but right now, I see a lot of black lives in the streets being slain. And be not confused that I hashtag in solidarity not to change the world, because I know that I'm still waiting on that last hashtag to bring back our girls. So if I hashtag Ferguson or Mike Brown, I'm just trying to get you to visualize that my experience is that courtrooms are to circuses what judges have been to clowns. I'll repeat: Courtrooms are to circuses what judges are to clowns. It's all for entertainment, and we show up to the show, and then we keep buying into that mess until we run our own. I want my kids to run for office and not to feel like they have to run from the police. And for them to know their own history, instead of being fed this Columbus Day mess until they are obese, I want them to know that they were warriors before we were bought and sold into slavery. So I won't buy into consumerism on Black Friday, especially when I know that the money goes into pockets of corporate owners that don't look like me, people who capitalize off of the deaths of black children that look like me, folks who were never warriors, so they take what they want of our culture and rewrite our history, folks that kill black leaders and call it an unserved mystery. See, I want to know what it's like to have the privilege of making this all go away when I turn off the TV, because I can turn it off, but the killing never stops for me and my community, and so the reality is that my children could be the next ones killed by the cops. So here I am, carrying with me this invisible shield of protection of my being, using it to protect and serve everyone but me. As a woman of color, I've gotten so accustomed to taking care of everyone else that self-care has become a revolutionary byproduct of my defiance. And since my existence, as a loud woman who plans on having black children, who is carrying a black child, is in juxtaposition to the quiet and sterile woman that society wants me to be, I need an alliance. And so, to the present and future mothers, I stand with you, both in solidarity as well as a woman of color, because I've watched the news and I've seen it to be true that everyone remembers the names of the martyrs, but no one remembers how it affects the mothers. So this is for Mammy Till: We'll never stop showing Emmett's face. And this is for Sabrina Fulton: We will never forget Trayvon's name. And this is for Sheila O'Neil: We honor Terrence and we stand with you in this race. And this is for Leslie McSpadden: Because Mike Brown's life does have value, even on Black Fridays. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, for that beautiful recitation, a powerful original work. I think it really speaks to the moment, to the pain, to the tragedy, to the trauma that we are all feeling in this moment, and really, really appreciate your willingness to be here with us today and share that work. With that, I would like to now open up the public hearing. Again, we are asking each speaker to sign in and limit your comments to two minutes. We will have a 30-minute time period for public hearings. You know, and I would just suggest that this is not normally a part of the process for our community meetings. We typically do a public notice for public hearings so that people can have an opportunity to come and speak, but given the events of the past few weeks, as I have mentioned, we felt, as an entire council, that this was the appropriate thing to do. And so, I would invite the first speaker. I don't have a list of the names of our speakers. And I am waiting for the clerk to bring that up. I think it's right... So our first speaker is Mr. Dave Bickin.
Thank you. I'm Dave Bickin of 4200 Cedar Avenue in Minneapolis. I'm glad that the body camera footage is going to be released, and it's entirely appropriate that it not be released until the witnesses have given their statements, so that it does not contaminate their statements. I think one very important question to ask, though, is will the officers, or have the officers, seen the video? And will that contaminate their statements or allow them to know what they can say and what they can't say? So I think that's a very important question you should ask. We also want to make sure that BCA doesn't play around with this. In the Darren Yonkey case in Ramsey County, the last witness wasn't interviewed until 10 months after the shooting, so watch for that. These two officers, especially paired together, were a disaster waiting to happen. You recall the bulletproof warrior training? About a month ago, the Minneapolis Police pulled its officers from that after we publicized that. Also, that Officer Yanez, who killed Philando Castillo, took that training. Well, in this case, we don't know whether Justin Schmidt has taken training similar to that, but we do know he actually conducts that kind of training, the training we call fear-based training. "The world is such a scary place, you'd better shoot first and ask questions later." He works for Archway Defense. They pulled his name from their website because they had enough time to do that before Justin Schmidt's name was released, but he conducts that kind of training. Also, the complaint history that was released on the website, we appreciate that, but it's lacking. It understates the number of complaints that both of these officers have had. I've passed out a sheet that explains that to you. Justin Schmidt has had eight complaints, not the five that were listed, in only five years on the force. And Ryan Kelly has... Oh, no, Ryan Kelly has eight complaints, not the five that were listed, after five years on the force. Justin Schmidt has had five complaints rather than the three that were listed, so I think it's important that that record be set straight and that we not minimize the danger these officers were and still are. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we bring up the next speaker, I just want to acknowledge that we have been joined by Mayor Frye. Thank you for being here, sir. And then invite Cordon Nielsen to speak. Am I pronouncing your name correctly? And please state your address for the record, for the public record, please.
My name is Cordon Nielsen. My address is 310 Fourth Avenue South. I'm the founder of an organization called The New North. We're a police accountability watchdog group with a focus on victims who are experiencing a mental health crisis when they interact with the police. I'm here today because I'm angry and sad for Thurman Blevins. I'm scared for his family. I'm scared that this young father will have been killed in vain. I'm scared that this is going to be another family here in Minnesota that receives no justice after their loved one has been killed by police. Last year, we approved body worn cameras for the Minneapolis Police Department. While I had my own personal reservations about giving them these cameras, we have them now, and I think the footage needs to be used. Releasing the footage is a necessity for all parties involved. If indeed MPD is telling the truth, it would be in their best interest to be transparent. I know that I, Thurman Blevins' family, the community, all of us do not trust the initial police narrative. We're at a pivotal point in time, and I believe transparency is crucial to how we move forward as a society. I urge the mayor, this council, the county attorney, and the BCA to expedite this process and attempt to resolve it as soon as possible. We cannot continue to uphold the status quo. Trying to preserve a system that only works for one group of people has led Minnesota to have some of the worst racial disparities in the country, and business as usual will only make these disparities worse. Release the tapes and justice for Thurman Blevins. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is King Demetrius Pendleton.
Hello. My address is 620 East 19th Avenue Street. My name is King Demetrius Pendleton, independent journalist, photographer. This shirt represents a lot. I remember I was at Walmart, and they said, "When cops shows up," you know, it's all fun and games until the cop shows up. And I got this in 2014, when Jamal Clark was killed around in 2013, going into 2014. We've seen these flapdoodle accusations that went on constantly and constantly and constantly, how Mike Freeman basically threw him under the bus and swayed the whole jury. We're wondering if we're going to get any justice with Justine Diamond, how this case happened with him, with her victim as the police officer being removed from the police force. Is this going to happen in this case as well? Are you guys going to just, you know, we see a lot of activists, we see a lot of people in the community coming together, we see a lot of people that sits on these panels right here come together and come out to the scene. Are you guys going to do your job? Because right now, what we're seeing, we're seeing a whole lot of photo ops or what have they, and acting like people are really standing in solidarity, but what we're really seeing is people are procrastinating with the law. We're filibustering around, people's lives are dying, people are dying constantly, and people are really afraid of the police officers. A lot of people are getting to the point where they don't even want to call the police. They want to get people in the community to come together and organize something else. So we just want to know, are we going to get justice, or is it going to be just us again? Because this is hypocrisy. Again, on Minnesota Not So Nice Watch, the blood is on you all hands. We've seen what happened with Philando. There was no mistaking. And people come up with these flapdoodle accusations, like he had a gun, we had to do this. They let this man walk away. Shame on Minnesota. Nothing nice about it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nakima Levy-Pounds.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for suspending your normal portion of your meeting and allowing the people to speak. I'm here in solidarity with all of those who are outraged by the shooting death of Thurman Blevins. If you all recall, who were here at the Public Safety Committee meeting last week on Thursday, when I was testifying about the ketamine drugging scandal and the role of MPD, one of the things that I talked about were the systemic issues that are impacting the Minneapolis Police Department, and how it shouldn't take another person being killed before you guys take these matters seriously, and not even two days later. We have another person who was killed, not just shot, but gunned down like an animal in the streets of North Minneapolis. It reminded me, in terms of seeing the reports saying he was shot multiple times, as what someone would do when they're playing a video game, and they're seeing an inanimate object, and they're trying to get the object out of the way, and so they just shoot, and they shoot, and they shoot, and they shoot, because it's an inanimate object. We should not have these types of things happening on the streets to human beings. What this demonstrates is that there is a real core problem, which many of us have been talking about for years within the Minneapolis Police Department, a very violent culture, which has been cultivated over a number of years under different administrations, and that is continuing to come to a head. The problems have not been rooted out within the Minneapolis Police Department. Yes, we have a new chief, a chief who did a great job in terms of coming out and talking to the people on Saturday after this happened, which I've never seen happen before, but even the chief didn't have control over the behavior of his officers. We were standing there talking to him, and we looked down the street, and we saw one of the witnesses being placed in handcuffs and manhandled by MPD officers. And so, we said to the chief, "You're telling us what's going on, but look at what your officers are doing right over there." And the chief didn't know what was happening. He walked down there, asked some questions, and wound up taking that woman out of handcuffs. She had been charged with obstruction of legal process, which is another petty charge that MPD throws on people in circumstances like this. So the culture has not changed. We have officers continuing to engage in abusive conduct. You see their records, they're not disciplined, including the officers who were involved in the shooting death of Thurman Blevins. So you all have probably heard our demands. We want immediate release of the body camera footage. There's no excuse, because we know under Minnesota law, officers do have the right to review that footage, even though they're supposed to be trained to remember instances that happen, but yet, the witnesses can't review the footage, right? That's a double standard. It's hypocrisy. It's a setup. So there's no reason why that body camera footage should not be immediately released. There does not need to be conditions attached to it. As a matter of justice, the people and the family need to know what happened. We're tired of having to come here. If you guys would actually work systemically and root out the issues and stop letting the police union have control, we wouldn't have these things happening. And Mayor Frye, particularly for you, as the mayor of the city, we do not want to see statements where you are taking a one-sided approach and putting forth what the police have to say. You were not out there Saturday talking to the witnesses, feeling their pain, hearing what they had to say, and yet, you issue a statement like that that just rubber stamps this type of violence. So we're asking you, as the mayor, to do better and to come out and to not be afraid of the people. We want support from the city. We're tired of the status quo. We're tired of people dying. You guys have to do more, and there are many of us here willing to work with you, willing to work with you, even though right now, we don't have trust in the system. We are willing to work if we're going to see results. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jess Sundin. Excuse me if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Yes, Facebook doesn't tell you how to pronounce my name. Yep, my name is Jess Sundin. I live at 2911 Park Avenue, South Minneapolis. I'm here today with others, very concerned about another killing of another black man in our neighborhood. I want to say first, I don't believe there was a gun, and I don't know why the mayor was so confident that there was when he thought he could tell the media about it. That was the most hurtful thing you could have done, not only to Thurman Blevins' family, including his three young children, but the entire community. That was a shameful thing to do, and you should apologize. But I want to get to our demands, because we have real things we really need and not just words, because it seems like you only get yourself into trouble when you open your mouth, Mr. Mayor. First, we need the release of Thurman Blevins' body. His family's been told it might be held for six months. Can you imagine? And we know people who had it held for longer. You know, whether they need it for an independent autopsy or not, they needed to say goodbye. That's their loved one, and we have no right, the city, the state, they have no right to keep him from his family. His life was already taken, his body needs to be returned. Second, when we say we want a truly independent investigation and not the BCA, I want to point out something specific. We need people to start believing black witnesses. I work with the Twin Cities Coalition for Justice for Jamar, and there were dozens of black witnesses who saw him murdered. We know, I was on the scene Saturday evening, we know that community members saw what happened when police approached Thurman Blevins on that corner where he was sitting with his child and her, and another adult. We know, and they saw it. They told us. They don't make it up. They're not lying because they're black. A man who was sitting in his house and came out from his alley and followed police orders a few minutes later didn't see anything. He didn't see what happened. He saw after that one white witness who's getting his airtime. I want the city, the state, the investigating agency to believe black witnesses. That has to change. Finally, I want to, I just, I know time's up. I want to say two things real fast. We need to fire the police officers involved in this instance. We are tired of paid vacations for killer cops. Ryan Kelly and Justin Schmidt killed a man, and before that, they had more than a dozen complaints against them. These are bad cops, and we need them off the street. And finally, we need community control of the police, because we have seen that the mayor's office can't handle it, the city council doesn't have the power, the community knows what we want, knows what we need, and we insist on having that power back in our hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we bring up our next speaker, I also want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Gordon. Thank you for being here. And then, our next speaker is Deirdre, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Do we get a response about the demands that we have?
We're in the midst of a public hearing, and we're going to hear all of the testimony. Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Deirdre Daravik. I am a concerned mother, live in Minneapolis. I was there Saturday night, and I was there Saturday evening. I was there early, and people who were eyewitnesses all had consistent statements, very, very simply. What I saw not only was a community in absolute trauma, but I saw a police department that were making up what seemed to be their own rules as they went along, and it actually escalated the situation. They got, they had a line of police. You know, I heard you at the Public Safety Meeting, Mayor Frye, when you said that all these 911 calls were coming in, and we needed more police officers so we could keep the city safe. And if you could have seen how many police officers were standing in a line with hands on weapons, latex gloves, in front of people who had just lost a family member, okay? And then, the sergeant, who was public relations, was making up his own ideas about what is allowed to happen in a situation like this. I had one of the eyewitnesses who was there when both squad cars rolled up. BCA had taken her, they were detaining her, they were keeping her. I had her lawyer at the police tape, which you might want to take a look at that police tape. I've never seen police tape like that. They had people who were protesting taped in. It was like a spider web. And he was saying, Minneapolis Police Officer, that the attorney couldn't go speak to the person who was there when all of this occurred. I want you to understand that you are the person who has said you have no plan of bringing in more police, and a week or so later, you did it. And now, here we are, and I really, I really need you to understand this. Even if you don't agree with it, even if you have your money and your placement with developers and with the police, the Federation, I'm not going to call it a police union. I'm calling it the Police Federation. You know why? Because that thing's going to change, and it's going to change when you're in office, because we are not going to wait.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Aura Hokes.
Hotep, Chair Jenkins, council members. I come to you as a community elder, and I am just...
Could you please state your address for the record?
1350 Russell Avenue North, 55411, North Side.
Thank you, Ms. Hokes. Thank you.
Get that out of the way. I'm basically void of feelings, because there have just been so many of these incidents. It's beyond troubling. In the words of Fannie Lou Hamer, our activist said, "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired." For the family of Brother Blevins, they're mourning now. Our community is mourning. You're going to have a presentation about race, equity, and trauma. Our community has long been traumatized by this. History is not repeating itself. History is continuing, because we know that as people of African descent, war was declared upon us a long time ago. War has been declared by the police departments across America, and particularly in Minneapolis, on African-American males. For some reason, there's a fear of African-American males. We tell our children not to run from dogs, right? So they do run, because they are afraid. So running from the police is a natural instinct, because they are afraid of the police. I asked a police officer, "Why don't they shoot in the leg? Shoot the gun out of the hand? Shoot in the arm?" I was told, "We're trained to shoot to kill." So therefore, I am asking you, Mayor Fry, City Council, who has the authority to put some policy change in place. This has got to stop. This is total insanity. In September of this year, Minneapolis will host the National Baptist Convention USA Inc. My pastor, Billy G. Russell, is getting calls. Is it safe for us to come? Over 30,000 African-Americans descend on Minneapolis, and they are afraid to come, because it's what's happening. I implore you, please, do something about this and the officers. They've got to stop killing people, or otherwise, take that sign off of their car. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please tell your pastor that, yes, it is safe for people to come. We have three more speakers, and then we are going to need to continue to move on with our regularly scheduled meeting. The next speaker is Curtis Avent.
Hello, City Council. Hello, community members. Amongst a number of our active and concerned community members...
Can you please state your address for the record, please?
Yeah, 530 Jenks, Sullivan, St. Paul. But I was raised in Minneapolis, in Minneapolis specifically. The scene there was horrific, specifically in regard to the officers and their presence, which leads to some of what I've already heard. But the militarized, like, just physical presence and standing of individuals in an aggressive manner after an individual is murdered is not only frightening, but it escalates tension within the community. I personally walked through with the sister of the victim, and when we walked up and tried to come through the alley just to get her to legal representation, because there was legal representation on hand, there were a number of officers that walked up to us in a very aggressive manner. Now, this is a woman who just lost her brother, who was just murdered in front of his daughter. And she has to be approached in a mannerism as if somehow she is a criminal, or because the color of her skin is somehow a weapon that they need to be afraid of. I'm sorry, I'm shaking a little bit here. This is... Specifically, aside from that, the actions of the BCA on that day, searching the woman's car without a warrant, searching the woman's house without a warrant, and lying to somebody who herself is a victim, and telling him that he represents her, is complete and utter... I'm not going to swear here, because there's children present, but you can understand the expletives that I'm about to use to describe that. Her attorney was not allowed to be present during the questioning or during the search, which in my mind, is a violation of all of our rights, period. So as far as you guys handing over investigations to the BCA, all of her rights were violated, all of them. How can you use this as an independent investigation or an entity that... And they are lying to a victim. They're illegally searching a victim's vehicle and home and keeping her away from her legal representation, but yet, you're going to stand and allow them to operate in this manner and use them in investigative purposes? Shameful. They should be removed from the case immediately. The video should be released immediately.
I have to ask you to wrap up your comments, sir.
His body should be released to the family immediately. You do not own this man's body. God owns this man's body. The city of Minneapolis stole his soul, and you don't give the whole his body. Give that family closure. Give that family peace. They've had enough taken from them already. With that, I'm done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Rivard. Is Rachel Rivard here?
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Rivard. I'm at 430 Jenks in St. Paul. I just want to elaborate a little bit more on what Mr. Avent just told you. I was present when the BCA investigator told the witness's attorney that she didn't need him, that the BCA investigator represented his client, and that he was to stay where he was. And then, he took the attorney's client and walked away from him, as though he had sat him down like a dog. Stay here. And then, they walked off. I have to tell you, that does not make me trust them. I heard it. I watched the attorney baffled and unsure what to do, because in his mind, he wants to trust this man. He wants to believe that what he's saying is true, that what he's saying is the right thing to do. For those of us who have seen this before, we had to approach him. They got pretty much down the block before we could get to him. And actually, I will say that in the sense that we actually sat and paused. Did that just happen? Did he just tell him to wait there and leave his client unattended? How does that happen? How do we trust these people? So as I'm processing this and having a conversation with my friend, we decided to approach the attorney and say, "You don't need to sit here. That is your client. You have every right to go with her. You have every right to go with her. Just because that man used his voice does not mean he's right. Turn around and go find her." By the time we got to the tape, they had moved her underneath it, and she was nowhere to be found. And the game began. You need to get in touch with her. She needs to exercise her right. Well, she had already done that. Her attorney wanted to be present. You need to do it again. You need to call her. Well, of course, she's not taking calls. She's being handled by the BCA right now. And so, her attorney sat there on one side of the line, unable to even find his client, never mind even know where she was. The police department, I would say, they attempted to assist in finding that, but I want to acknowledge that that process took over 25 minutes, and that at some point, her attorney became so frustrated, he left the line. Now, whether or not I would hire that attorney is not really a matter in this moment. But I have to tell you that when the BCA violates what our rights are, I am unable to trust them. You should be unable to trust them. I don't think that we have to sit here and tell you that they cannot be trusted any longer, that they potentially never should have been trusted in the first place.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. You are over time, and out of respect for the rest of our speakers...
I'm sorry.
Out of respect for the rest of our speakers, please wrap up your comments within the next 10 seconds.
I think I've said enough. I think my simple point is the BCA can no longer be trusted. We would like them removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jonathan Mason.
Hello. My name is Jonathan Mason. I don't personally feel comfortable giving my address, because I know you guys won't either. Right? But I want to get on the point of Thurman Blevins. Let's just get it out there quick. The mayor said there was a gun on the scene, so we have to say there's a gun on the scene. That's what I'm assuming now. He said it. He came out ahead of it. Now, his word is bond right now. So he said there's a gun on the scene. So Blevins had a gun. We need to see that. We need to see that video, though, because even if he had a gun and he's running and you shoot him in his back, that's murder. Period, point blank. So you said there's a gun. You've seen the videotape, because only for you to be able to say that that far ahead only means one thing, Mr. Jacob Frye, means you already watched it. Period. So you already seen the tape. So the tape's already been viewed. So now that we do know there probably is a gun on the scene, I don't want to make that assumption. Ooh, every man's innocent, especially like that, and he's a dead man, so I hope you don't want to say that ahead of the ballgame. Your shaking your head is yes, so there's a gun on the scene. So let's just make this real clear. We want that evidence right now for the public. The BCA, we know who killed him. I said it the other night ago, we know who killed him. You guys killed him. The evidence, you guys got the gun who did it. You got the video camera to do it. Come on, all... Like the lady just said earlier, I was the one saying we were spider-wamp. You guys had one part section off, another part section off. You were pushing people back. You don't want the community to be involved. But like Nikima said, we want the community to be in charge of the law enforcement now in Minneapolis. We know what's right or wrong. If there's a gang shooting, all of us in the community, let's go find them. Once we find out who it is with the police department, let's go get them. But we're not going to play this ballgame where we're waiting. The BCA needs the body. The soul's already gone, like my man said. Give the family the body, release the tape, let us see what happened. There's a gun on the scene. Jacob Frye said it. So let's get down to the bottom of it, so we don't have to have this tension in Minneapolis. I got kids all over Minneapolis Public Schools that are out in the summertime. And Mason, I don't even want to go out there right now. I was just planning on, we got kids trying to set up businesses. We see what's going across the country right now. White supremacy is on the march. We've seen it. They're literally on the march in Charlottesville. We just seen it. They're calling us barbecue, swimming pools. They're ready. Go back. Don't come in, borders up. Kids tore away from families. The black community's been seeing it for 400 years. We're ready for it. I'm ready for it. We're not backing down. I'm truthful. We don't need weapons or none of that. We got truth. So Jacob Frye, you said there's a gun on the scene? Release the tape then, okay? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Thank you. Thank you all for showing up here today and for speaking your piece. This concludes our public hearing, and I will open up the floor for any comments from my colleagues. If there are any... Anybody? Councilmember Gordon? And then Cunningham?
Thank you, and I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that we did do some comments. I don't think we want to let this go without weighing in and having a little discussion ourselves. I think that's critically important. I want to thank you, Vice President Jenkins, for opening this up for community comment and for discussion. I think that in and of itself shows a dramatic difference from past incidences similar to this. And hopefully, it sends a signal that we're more open, and we're more willing to listen, and we're more willing to make creative changes to make a difference. As I was listening to people and hearing the demands, the requests, some of the ideas, I think some of them seem perfectly reasonable. I'd like to see the tapes released. I absolutely would like to see the body returned. I have to say that I lost faith in the BCA doing these kind of investigations when I saw the results of what have come in from the last few of these police shootings. It just seemed like it's not really the kind of credible source we want to get this up. I would like to see what our own Civil Rights Department uncovers about this and other things as well. And I think, I think there's a lot of issues about control of the police, and I just want to take this opportunity to clarify for folks that the city, we're set up very unique here in our city charter. A lot of people, and I did when I first got elected, I imagined I'm going to be on the city council now. I'm going to be able to participate in directing and managing and setting policy for the Public Works Department, for our Housing Inspections and Regulatory Services Department, for the Fire Department, and for the Police Department, and all the departments in the city. And then, I got here and I learned after a little while, yeah, that's true for Public Works, that's true for the Fire Department, it's true for Housing Inspectors, but the city council has no authority to set policy for the Police Department. There's a special clause in the charter that says that's all exclusively the power under the mayor's office. And I know that for some people, that would seem like a small step towards grassroots democracy, moving from one person to 14 that could maybe share that authority. But for me, I think it's a critically important step. Not only does it give me an avenue to say, "Hey, I can't be, I'm not responsible. I don't have any authority as a council member."
But can you put pressure on the mayor? Do you hear what you're saying? We don't have that.
So we have some authority. We also confirm the appointment of the chief, and we also approve a budget. So absolutely, there's a lot of muscle that I've tried to throw around and impact. We also pass and can repeal the laws and the low-level offenses that the police are enforcing. So I'm not saying there's no responsibility, and we don't try as a council to make a difference. What I'm saying is, I think one step we could take is maybe looking at that charter provision and seeing if we can't do it. One thing that that does is it sets it up as if we're some executive, we have an executive branch like the federal government, where there's a commander in chief of our police department. And I don't think that's what we even want. I think what we want is professional department of people who work for the city like everybody else. And it's not supposed to be some military setup where there's generals, and this would be a step towards demilitarizing the police. And the way we could get to a charter amendment about that would be to put it on the ballot and let the people decide, and they could decide if they want the chief to have some special kind of alignment with the mayor's office and the police department, or if they just think that we should have it set up just like every other department had. It's a small thing, but it's a thing we could move forward on, and there's many other things that we could as well. But I think I'll yield the time here now that I got to pitch that idea, and let's see what other ideas we have up here that people want to talk about.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Our next speaker is Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say thank you to everybody for being here, everybody who spoke. This shooting of Thurman Blevins, also known as June, in our neighborhood, our community, this has been a total tragedy in our ward, and it's impacted. I've listened to folks, it's impacted folks from all walks of life, both in the ward as well as outside of the ward. When a bomb like this goes off in a community... When a bomb like this goes off in a community, really the public discussion and dialogue really zooms in on two particular aspects. The first is the community's response, zeroing in how the community is behaving and, and pulling that apart and judging that. And then the second is the subsequent investigation and the process. Those are the two things that we focus on. And what we see happen oftentimes is those two conversations get crisscrossed, and then, which they should not be. And whenever, and because of our current legal and criminal justice system, the, the, that trumps what the community's response is. So we end up prioritizing that and not holding space whatsoever. So I wanted to take a moment to separate those two. So first, I want to talk about community trauma. We talked a lot, we've heard a lot about it here today, but it is necessary to know and understand the history of policing and harm that that institution has inflicted on marginalized communities, particularly black and native communities. When an officer-involved shooting happens, it's never just about that specific case. Generations of trauma come up with every single case. This is not identity politics. This is not making it about race. This is not, this is not a judgment on this particular case. Community trauma is real, and the wounds cannot heal if they keep being torn open over and over again. There are folks who are going to say that, you know, it shouldn't, you shouldn't keep having these wounds torn open again. But at the end of the day, Dylan Roof was able to walk into a church, kill with a machine gun, kill nine black folks, be able to be taken alive, and get a cheeseburger on the way to jail. That reality is unjust. It is unjust. We are never going to be able to have a productive public dialogue if there remains the inability to acknowledge and hold the emotional distress that is experienced by the North Side and other marginalized communities when bombs like this go off. And now the second, the second point I want to touch on is the investigation process. So historically, I have supported not releasing any evidence to maintain the integrity of the investigation. I have understood that historically. However, in this case, we saw some information was chosen to be shared, which has led to innuendos and rumors and assumptions, and a narrative has been already created about what happened. While I, I very much so am grateful that the body footage, body cam footage will be released sooner than historically the BCA has released it, I just cannot agree, agree with the logic that somehow the rumors and innuendo do not influence the, the investigation, however facts do. And so, so I, I have some concerns, and would, I, I would like to see the body cam footage released immediately. I would also like to share that I have not yet seen the footage myself, which has made it very challenging as the council member for that area. And so that has been frustrating for me as well, and I just wanted to name to folks that, like, I have not seen that. I have spoken to the governor's office about releasing his body. And so I just want folks to know that I've already been hearing you and, and trying to take some action where I can. I just want to say to my beloved community that I am here to listen, to support, and to take action on your behalf here in this institution of power. And I very strongly want to build power with you to make this happen, make the changes possible, because I can do the, some of the policies, the systems change, and so we need to be building power together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Next is Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm incredibly grateful to be serving the North Side with Councilmember Cunningham because I can, you know, be a little bit more reserved, and, and I appreciate your ability to be able to speak with, with earnestness and seriousness about what's going on. This happened in your hood, and it's been an honor, and it's an honor to serve with you. So I just wanted to reiterate that we're looking to turn the concerns of the community into action. I think that as, as new council members, we ran on platforms of police accountability. We ran on platforms of transparency. We ran on platforms to, to, to serve the most vulnerable in our city, and our constituents agreed with us. And, and, and many of you all are our constituents, and, and you agreed with us, and you sent us here to do this. There was a, one gentleman who called for us to, to do our job, and I think that we're going to be looking to do exactly that. Oh, I also just wanted to say that my colleague, Councilmember Goodman, we co-chair a committee. We're supposed to be setting the agenda. She's going to be coming right back. Didn't want you guys to think that, you know, somebody from the council had just walked out without purpose. She, she actually went to agenda setting so that I could stay here and, and make, and hear you all. You know, I, I want to make sure that, that we do have transparency, that we are seeing justice. And, you know, the North Minneapolis, while it's split into two wards, is considered, you know, I don't know too many of my neighbors who consider Lowry as like some, some great dividing line, right? And so, and so when I see something like this happen, it's not segmented in some other parts of the city for me. As somebody who's born and raised in North Minneapolis, it happened in my neighborhood. And I want to let you know that as we're trying to stay clear-headed, as we're trying to make sure that we are making good decisions as policymakers, it does get tough because you do feel the, you do feel this loss at, at an emotional level. You know, it's our job to make sure that doesn't get in the way of what we're doing, but I think it's actually going to be an asset in, in making the kind of decisions and providing the kind of transparency that we need to have. I wanted to make that commitment to you all. I spent, I spent, I was at the scene from 6:50 to 2:00 AM, making sure that, that there wasn't an escalation, that, that the, that the police were, to the best of my ability, backing off of the community. And it, and it can be scary as somebody who's been on, on both sides as an activist and as somebody who is now elected into office, to see that line, that militaristic line, it doesn't seem like the appropriate way to, to, to handle community. And so, the best, to the best of our ability, like Councilmember Gordon said, while there are limitations, we're not going to hide behind those limitations. We're going to lean into that, and we're going to figure out what, what, what can we do? What will we do? What needs to change? And that's, I just wanted to make that commitment to not just the people in this room, but the, but the many people outside this room, beyond this room. Most importantly, to the people of Ward Four and Five who, who are feeling this really viscerally. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. And our next speaker is Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to reiterate what Councilmember Gordon said, and thank you so much for your leadership in, in this moment, which is critically important and is different than in the past. And I also want to just voice my support for Councilmembers Cunningham and Ellison for their leadership and all the work that they are doing behind the scenes, which has not been publicly acknowledged or covered by the press in the same way that I think it should be. But they are working day in and day out, every minute and every second of the day, on behalf of their constituents in North Minneapolis. I shared with the mayor yesterday, it has been my position since I took office that I support the immediate release of body camera footage and any other primary source of factual information to the community now, immediately. I would defer to the leadership of my colleagues who, you know, represent the community, and I really appreciate Councilmember Cunningham's careful attention to the effect of traumatic action on the community. And so he has my full support in, in how he wants to handle that. But I just want to reiterate that the council member from the ward has not seen the body camera footage. Okay? So I think I support the immediate release of the footage to the full community. I think that at the very least, the council member should have access to that information. So I just want to clarify that that's my position on that, shared that with the mayor as well. And then just to the point of Councilmember Gordon, I just want to, something that Councilmember Gordon is talking about is that potentially, as the city council, we have the power to put onto the ballot a question to the voters of Minneapolis about how our charter handles the authority of the mayor and the council related to the police department. And my perspective on that is I am open to having that community conversation. And I think there are probably arguments for and against that. There are pros and cons that people in this room may have really different perspectives on. And I don't think we should make assumptions about what those perspectives would be. But I'm open to having that conversation. And as any of my colleagues would tell you, when something like this happens, we all get calls from our constituents asking us to do something. And we don't have a lot of direct power. We have, we have the power to call on the mayor to do things. We have the power of a budget, but we do not have direct authority over the police department's policies or the Civil Rights Department at this time. And so I'm open to the conversation that Councilmember Gordon has raised. We've talked about it in the past. We talked about it last term as well. So it's nothing about this mayor or any future mayor, but I think it is a particular topic of conversation that the city should have. So those are my thoughts. Thank you again for the leadership of Councilmember Jenkins, Cunningham, and Ellison.
Thank you, President Bender. Our next speaker in queue is Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank everyone who came out here and spoke today. And I also want to recognize that there's a lot of people that aren't here today because either they're working, or they're grieving, or they don't feel comfortable being here, or they're physically unable to get here, for whatever reason. You're representing a lot of people here with your voices today, and you've represented those voices, and they've also spoken up since this tragedy happened. Want to thank my colleagues on the North Side for all their leadership. It's hard coming in as new council members, you feel like you're drinking from a fire hose, and then to have a tragedy like this is very difficult. But I've been inspired by your work and your leadership. So thank you. I want to echo support as well for what Councilmember Gordon said. This is something, this charter change idea is something I've supported, going back to the previous mayoral administration before our elections happened. Right now, we have more oversight of our potholes than we do our police. And that's not right. And I think that that should change. And I support putting it on the ballot, and if the voters don't agree that we should increase the oversight and the accountability, I'll respect that decision, but I think it should be on the ballot for the voters to decide. Also, just want to acknowledge as well, this whole aspect of this narrative around he had a gun. This is America. You have a Second Amendment right to have a gun. And having a gun on you is not necessarily illegal, and it shouldn't immediately cause a person to be suspicious or suspected. And we've seen instances where, like with Philando Castile, where if you stop and you follow all your orders and you have a gun, you can still get shot. So I understand why someone, a black man, would run from police in that circumstance. And I think there's a lot of questions that we need answered here, and that's why I support getting this body camera footage out there. And I appreciate the mayor and his commitment to do that as soon as absolutely possible. Also want to acknowledge that he has been very accessible to council members throughout this process, and I've seen him out there as well with the community. And so I appreciate his leadership as well. And this whole experience and the other ones that came before it have really caused me to reconsider my positions and what I can do to help as well. And so want to keep working with all you and reiterate my commitment to doing that and how we can envision and actually come through and pull through with a stronger Minneapolis where everybody here feels safe and isn't afraid of the police, and where we have the safety in our communities that's being led by the communities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next, next speaker is Councilmember Schrader, followed by Councilmember Worszami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Where I'm at, I'm done explaining away injustice to my kids. Things need to change. I definitely support getting the, immediately releasing the tapes, and I support Councilmember Gordon's, Gordon's call to, you know, put on a charter amendment to change the police. But I don't want that to be the discussion. The discussion needs to be, how do we have different outcomes? How do we have a police force that protects us all? How do we have one that thinks about the community? That is what my whole goal would be with that. We need to focus on different outcomes. We're not getting them right now. I want to thank you all for coming out. And as Councilmember Johnson said, there's people not here, and one of their names is Thurman Blevins. We need to keep that front and center. I think I also want to be very clear that, you know, as we talk about what we're doing next, we had a lot of very good ideas come about, about training, holding police more accountable. And I would say I, I was there at the last shooting. We need to be going beyond that. We need to hold ourselves accountable to getting that done and to making sure that this doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Councilmember Worszami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks to community members for coming and for the comments that people have made. You know, I've been on the council for four and a half years, and I would say that, you know, I have failed in terms of making a change with the police behavior and the way the police have interacted with the community. And I think we do need to change that. We have to be honest with ourselves, and we have to be honest with the reality on the ground. People are afraid of the police, especially people who, who look like me are afraid of the police. And, and, you know, we were joking a couple of days ago about how the police department doesn't work like Public Works. You know, people don't like paid assessments, and yet Public Works still works. And, and our police department is not working, it's not functioning properly. And we have to make drastic changes. And the fact that you have, we have another discussion about a black man who got shot. It's just disgusting, and it's disturbing, and it's scary. Because I'm a black man, and I've been scared of the police all my life, and that's, that's the honest truth. And sometimes I'm scared of the police now, even though, you, you know, people put you on a pedestal or make you believe that you have power. So I think we, we have to make some changes, and this is disturbing, and this is wrong, and we shouldn't be having this discussion, you know, again and again. It's like you're having déjà vu. It's the same, you're sitting in the same seat, the same people arguing about the same things. And I, you know, and I want to also acknowledge the fact that all the members of the council have, you know, people are, they have, they're in the right, you know, their heart is in the right place. And I'm being honest, and the mayor as well. But it's frustrating because the system is not system-designed for us. And the system is hard. It doesn't change easily. It pushes back against you. And I want, and I want to thank Councilmember Ellison. You know, he's young, he's a lot younger than I am, and he, he was an activist, and he was right here screaming at us, right here on this side. And, you know, so I do, I want to acknowledge his, the fact that he has a lot of responsibilities. And, and also Councilmember Cunningham, who's also young. And, and, you know, and it's hard for them. So I want to acknowledge that as well. And I, I text him the other night, you know, that I was going to be there for him. It's, it's really hard. There's nothing that I can say right now to soothe people's feelings. There's nothing that I can say that I, that I think will soothe my feelings right now. But thank you for coming, and I think we have a lot of work to do. And the one thing that I always, and I told Councilmember Ellison this when we have discussions, you know, we're poor, we're poor, we're a poor community. And, and, and I think that poverty makes us much weaker than who we should be. And I think we need to work on that. As much as these discussions, we need to work on unemployment, we need to work on making sure our kids don't have to suffer, and don't have to be scared, and don't have to be just in public housing or affordable housing. We have to be part of this society, and there's nothing, you know, it's hard. So thank you for everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Worszami. Next, we're going to hear from Councilmember Cunningham.
I just want to make one last point here, that I feel like it's actually a little bit of a silver lining here, which is that we had all 13 council members sign on to a statement that opened with, "We, the Minneapolis City Council, stand in solidarity with Northsiders." So I just want to name that into this space because I don't know if that's ever happened before. And so just wanted to name that folks are here, they see, they hear, keep being present, keep being in contact and conversation. But the whole city council said, "We stand in solidarity with Northsiders."
Wow. Well, you know, I want to, I want to thank you all. I want to thank the community for, for exhibiting hope by showing up here today. You know, King Demetrius started out by saying, talking about the T-shirt that he's wearing today. And, and I'm wearing a T-shirt today that symbolizes Michelle Obama, and, and she talked about giving hope to her children and how if we can't have hope, then there is nothing left for us to do on this planet. And so... have hope, then there is nothing left for us to do on this planet. And so I encourage you all to continue to stay hopeful, continue to press this body and other bodies. We, you know, meaning the Hennepin County, the Minnesota State Legislature, the White House, the Department of Justice, we have to be in all of these spaces demanding accountability, demanding progress continue to be made to live out the best of the hopes of the United States Constitution, which says, "We are in pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness." And we have to bring that to justice. It is never going to come easily. It's only going to come with struggle. And so thank you for being here today. Thank you to my colleagues for their comments, and I echo comment made by Councilmember Worsami, that all of these people on this body are trying to do the best that they can to continue to make Minneapolis the best city that it can be. And I am the first one to acknowledge that we have a very, very, very long way to go. And so, you know, I just want to say thank you all for being here. Let's continue to struggle and build power together, as Councilmember Cunningham has said. And with that, I think we- Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to please not disrupt these proceedings. If the family member is here and wishes to address the council, I will allow that. Right here.
Madam Chair, I'm also getting messages that folks are not being let in. If there are folks not being let in, can we not-
Yeah, if my brother is out there-
Yeah, I don't want to get-
He needs to be in. If there's any family members of Blevins, they need to be in.
I don't want things escalating in the hall.
What's going on? How many people can be in here? And don't take pictures of me. Do not take pictures of me. Thank you.
Well, I do want to let you know, ma'am, that we are being recorded.
That's fine. That recording is fine, but do not take any pictures of me. Thank you. Appreciate it. And that's also the family of Thurman Blevins. I just want to note, first things first, that we are devastated and very hurt, very hurt. I just want to note also that despite the allegations and speculations that led up to the Minneapolis Police Department arriving to that address of where Thurman Blevins was at, whatever the process was that was taken upon from the police, it wasn't correct. It was wrong. Meaning that whatever they did that led him to say, okay, I need to run and hit this block, he was afraid. And it's not rocket science to figure that out. I want everybody to know that. It was not rocket science. And about the gun, maybe you should ask yourself, why did he even need a gun? Period. Period. Why do people need a gun? Why do young black men need a gun on the street? Period. Ask yourselves that. How about we start there? Why did he need the gun? Because that will answer a lot of your questions right there. And then if you want to pull up criminal records, huh, let's pull up yours. Shit, pull up mine, because I got one. We all got one. So let's not use criminal records, let's not use backgrounds to say, okay, hey, what actions was taken was justified from this person's background, because it wasn't. That's murder. These two officers also had complaints already taken upon them that was not justified at all from the court system, whatever. Hey, and I'm also apologizing in regards to if I'm not up here speaking as legislative, whatever. Hey, I'm here to get the point across, and I'm thinking, y'all, y'all hear me loud and clear. But, um, and I'm heated, but I'm very smart. And I graduated from a historical black college down in the University of Shawnee University in North Carolina. So don't let any of that mistake you. I'm just very upset, as well as my family. But I just also want to note that, forget the video footage. It's funny, I got to laugh to keep from crying, because I'm really upset. But forget the video footage, because also the video footage, hey, correct me if I'm wrong, only shows from him running into the alley and them shooting him. My family don't want to see you killing my brother, I mean, my cousin. We want to see, get out the car, hey, put your hands up. We want to see that process. What was taken, what happened on that process for my cousin to think, hey, this ain't right. I think I do need to run. And also, from eyewitnesses, he didn't have no gun. I don't care what you guys got to say. He did not have no gun, and we want, we want to, everything will get justified. And that's a demand. That's not, that's not me asking. That's not no hope. That's a demand. I got, there's always hope tattooed on me. But see, that's kind of a mistake, because I also learned in my life, you can have all the hope you want, but you got to demand. You got to demand, and you got to take a stand. But see, we taking stands now, but this is me getting on the stage. And like I said, I'm Sidney Brown. I take the last name of my father. But we got Blevins here. My mother is a Blevins. Thurman Blevins is my very first cousin. Never in my life would I have to think that he will get killed by the police, with all that's also happening in the world right now. And I'm also here to stand for them. I'm here to stand for y'all, too. It's wrong. It's very wrong. It's so wrong. Now, see, we would have been okay, because we understand when it's gang or gang violence, or when it's just, you know, our black on black violence, we understand that, because we understand the dynamics that comes behind that. But when it's our, when it's people we say that's here, that we pay good money for it, we don't even got no money ourselves, because y'all won't give us no money. And we work hard, and we work hard for everything that we do. He worked hard. He worked hard. He was a good father. He was a good friend. He was a good neighbor. He was a good man, despite whatever you want to pull up on him. He was a good man. And I'm here to let the world know that. He was a good man. Ask the people that's outside standing right there by his memorial site. Yeah, every time I seen him, all he would do is say, hi, how you doing? Give me money for food, for everything. People keep calling us like, yeah, I knew Thurman, I knew Thurman, I knew Junior. I bet you did, because the Blevins, the Browns, we have good hearts. We don't look at, and this is also a major thing I wanted to correct. This is not about race. Uh-uh. We don't, we don't cover that. We don't do that. We do black and white. We focus on that every time, time and then, but we also seeing the dynamics behind that. We don't get no justice when we doing black and white, because y'all want to play the card that, oh, it should be all lies matter, not just black lies. And you're right. But when we, when you look at the scale of who's been hurt more, and who's indeed the more harmed, we not going to play those games. We do things by actual ethical facts, dealing with ethical dilemmas, and really justifying whatever is going down on the billboard. We, what? We look at all aspects, all aspects. And that's what I want y'all to do in this case. Look at all aspects. Look at the reports that was already taken upon those police officers. Maybe, maybe they was mad that day when they approached my cousin. Maybe they were a little upset from some stuff that was already arousing from whatever that was going on. You got to look at that. And when we talk about, oh, certain people holding guns and this and that, mental issues, how about we start focusing also on mental issues on police officers? Are they capable enough to even be holding that position themselves? Are you guys capable of even holding these positions that y'all have up here on this stand? Stop playing with me. For real. Straight up. And that's all, really, I have to say. Brother, do you have anything to say in regards to Thurman Blevins?
So I'm Vanessa Anderson. I have his two older children. Honestly, despite the footage, I don't really need to see all that. What my concern is, even for my children, is the approach. Did you de-escalate something, or did you escalate something? That's my number one thing. Not only that, that could have been me standing next to him on that curb with my daughter. So you were going to put my life in danger and my child in danger to do what you wanted to do. This video is only going to show the initiative of why they jumped out the way they did. Despite all the statements and everything people saw, that video is going to give us that. The end result, whether or not he had a gun in that alley, I don't care about that. I want to know why the police took it upon themselves to jump out the car with a little baby and a woman there so aggressively approaching them in a community, people outside with their pistols drawn. I'm afraid and still shaking for her, not just him, losing him. She was there. She saw her life flash. Didn't know if she was going to go or her baby. And that is what everybody should think about when they go home to their children and to their wife. What if that would have been them in that situation because of a, you know, I don't know why they pulled, honestly, I don't know why there was a cop went by. I don't know why the other one went by. I don't, they were looking for someone in the area. I just really need to see, you know, for them. That's my closure, is I want to see that footage. But, I mean, we all want to see the footage, right? But I still believe it needs to be deeper than that. It needs to be the fact that they got out. The end result is there. We all know the end result. We all know that. But I want to know why we still have these police officers escalating versus de-escalating the situation. And speaking for my children, they are distraught. His other daughter is as well. You know, like they said, you get one father, you know, and he was taken from them. Fortunately, they have my fiance as well. But like my daughter told me, but mom, I only get one father, and I will never be able to give her that back. Those memories that they had with him, I, you know, we just got to keep those going. You know, I grew up with him as well. We were teenagers together. It's how we have these children. So I know him on a whole nother level, which the media's not going to present, of course. They're going to show all the, you know, what they want you to see and portray him as being this, this and that. But at the end of the day, he was human. We are all human, and we all make mistakes, and we all have decisions, which he paid his time for. So on that day, that was a different time. You do not get to bring that up. You did not get to go off of that. Frankly, I don't even know if the police knew who he was when he pulled up. So I just believe that we need to be working with the police system and changing that in the way that police are doing these trainings. I don't believe in these combat trainings. There needs to be more de-escalating trainings. I understand that that's a different entity to the Minneapolis Police Department, but I believe that they should be, you know, knowing what their officers are doing on their leisure time as these trainings. Because when you are trained to do something, that's most likely the training you're going to do in those acts. You're not going to be doing the training maybe you learn in the MPD. So I feel like it needs to be that. And it's sad that my kids and I have actually went and went to these protests for all these others that have been before, or the injustice before. And now they get to do it for their own dad. Never, never would have thought that we would ever have went to one of those for their own dad. So I just ask you to, you know, think about it in that situation. I understand the public wants the footage. We want the footage. But that footage isn't going to do anything for me already. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you so much. Are there any other family members that wishes to speak? And if so, please sign your name so that we can have a record of who has been in attendance at this meeting. Seeing none, I'm gonna-
Yeah, so I'm also a cousin of Thurman Blevins. My name is Rashawn Brown. Kind of just to piggyback off of what Vanessa said, I mean, the biggest picture of it all is he did have daughters. No man on this earth can dictate when another human being is supposed to die. Only God himself. I understand there was a situation that led up to his death, but at the end of the day, Junior did not deserve to die the way he did at all. And for him to be shot multiple times like that is very, very horrible on the police part, you know. There's a lot I have to say. I just don't even know how to say it, you know what I mean? It's very, it's very hurtful. And honestly, you know what I mean? The only thing I think about is, am I next? That's my baby girl right there. Honestly, I'm scared to get pulled over by the police now. I don't know what's going to happen. Never in a million years would I have ever thought that my cousin Junior would be shot down like that by the police, someone that we supposed to call to protect us. We can't even do that anymore. And that's the sad part about everything. Nobody wants to call the police anymore. So it's like, do we form our own and create our own justice? Is that what you guys really want? That's a serious question. Does it really take for our people to rise all the way to this level when we're holding guns and we're actually fighting back the police that's supposed to be protecting us, just for you guys to see where we're coming from? And it's like, at what point do we really realize enough is enough on both ends? And again, like my sister said, it's not about a black and white thing. I haven't, I've never had a problem with white, with white people. Never had a problem with Mexicans, any type of race, I've never had a problem with. Love is love. Hate is hate. It don't.
And I just want to say, too, of everybody coming and making those posts on ABC News, Fox 9, God sees that. It's evil. It's ugly. We would never, ever in our life would have said something so evil or so hurtful to any of your family members. And if you're in this room, may God have mercy on your soul, and may you rot in hell like I stated to the world to see.
There has to be change.
Okay, y'all get real silent when y'all in the room. But like I said in the post, you can see on Fox 9, it's, y'all always oblivious when it comes down to y'all. But it's okay. We take full accountability. Like I said, my cousin Junior, and I also want to note this one last thing, we'll get out of y'all hair, since y'all looking real irritated up there by the fact that we just coming up here with facts and factual information. I just want to know, y'all keep hearing cousins, because Junior has a very small family. You won't hear any Blevins, any Browns, really, because it's very small. It's very small. We don't have aunties, uncles, like everybody else, that's so blessed to have. We don't have that. That's why we're so hurt. You took the last little bit of our generation, and that's so deep. Like, I don't think y'all understand that. Like, y'all should have thought before police, the Minneapolis Police Department, y'all should have thought before y'all acted. Just like how y'all teach us in school. Think before you speak. Think before you act. What about you? What about you? What about you guys? You guys take on those, those main little life aspects that y'all teach your children and that you teach us as we grow up. Do y'all, when y'all finally reach that age of before, over 30, do y'all still live with those? I don't think y'all do, because of what y'all say and how y'all tend to go about things. Seems to me that y'all really are some true, real-life idiots. I don't even care anymore. Y'all some idiots. Y'all belligerent, y'all ignorant. And there's so much more we can say, but we're not going to be ugly. And I'm just leaving. I'm out of here.
The biggest thing is, I hope there is a fair investigation with this case. I hope there's nothing that's hidden. I hope everything is truthful, because if it's done in the dark, it will come to the light. And there's no hiding that. At the end of the day, we want justice, not only for the community, for us, but the biggest justice is for his daughters.
Again, I want to say thank you to everybody who showed up here today. I know this is a very painful and tragic moment in the history of this city. And it has been stated earlier, these incidents, these individual incidents bring to fore all of the accumulated trauma and pain that has been going on here in Minneapolis and all over this country and all throughout the world. So thank you for being here. My heart and prayers are with you, the family of Mr. Blevins and his children. And so, thank you. So I do ask that people stick around for the rest of our committee meeting. We are going to be discussing some topics that I think are, again, traumatic, but we have some opportunities for people to deal with some of that trauma and pain. And if you aren't able to stay, then please check in to the city's website and learn about these opportunities so that we can try to help bring some sense to all the madness that is, that is going on. try to help bring some, some sense to, to all the madness that is, that is going on. Would you like to speak, Mr. Mayor? We will hear from Mayor Frye.
Council Vice President, may I, may I?
Yes, please. We will hear from Mr. Frye, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak, knowing that I'm, I'm not part of this, uh, this committee of the whole. First, I'll, I'll say to the, uh, family, I, I'm so sorry. Obviously, I can't imagine what it's like to, to lose a loved one, to lose a, a son or a father. Been thinking recently, there, there's a lot of things that I can't imagine. Lot of things that I can't fully grasp due to a different background that I grew up in. I did not grow up afraid of the police. And I understand that that's because of the color of my skin. Yes. That's right. I, I, I did not grow up afraid of the police and, and that is because of the color of my skin. I did not grow up experiencing discrimination or oppression. And, and that is because of, of privilege. I did not grow up in instances where my loved ones or my friends, uh, were shot by law enforcement. And I, again, I can't imagine the pain that you're feeling right now, and I'm so sorry. Uh, to the rest of the community that is, that is here today, thank you. Although the words are often uncomfortable to hear, I think it's good for me to hear them. And I think leaning into that discomfort is something that I'm trying to do. I haven't always been successful, but I am trying. Uh, council members, especially those on the North Side, um, Council Member Jeremiah Ellison, Council Member Philippe Cunningham, you've been exemplary leaders. You have taught me a great deal, especially through tragedies like the shooting of Thurman Blevins. Uh, thank you to all of the council members of color. I think you are in the position right now, we collectively are in the position, to shift a culture that needs to be shifted. Right now, transparency obviously is exceedingly important. It's something that I believe all of us ran on. And I do want to be as transparent as possible. The way that this system has previously worked is that, uh, all information is turned over to the BCA and then none of it is revealed until usually many, many months later. In a time when there's so much distrust between communities and the police that are charged with protecting and serving them, uh, I do think that it's important that the, the body camera footage be released.
I feel like you should, um, take this time, like you speaking on so many things that you put out personally about the case, meaning that, you see that you've seen it then, the things that you gave to the communities, you put into our narrative. If you didn't want to be, you know, you are the victim, you're the, you're...
How do you say you're not part of the community, you're tired?
You should take this back now, moving forward in your turn, and make sure, careful how you speak. Cause you speak corrupt.
That's right. That's right.
And I just want you to...
No.
Now, when you are making your statements, if you didn't want, you know, them to, us to know as a public, could we get this muted video?
That's right.
Not sure if you don't, but we're leaving those, those little bits here and there for everyone to run with. That makes stronger in community.
And, and I hear you. And I hear you, um, I do. Releasing information bits at a time and, and, and trying to be transparent as possible, I'm not saying that I've been successful all the time. In fact, I know I've failed at times. But I am, but I do want to do this as expeditiously and as quickly and as fairly as possible. I will be releasing the body camera footage. Thank goodness that we have it. I will, and, and then we will be, we will be releasing it. Uh, first, I do think that it's important to consult with, with you, the family. Um, you know, talking to the family before we've released the footage and hearing about your wishes, I think, is really the first step in all of this because you're the ones that are experiencing the greatest deal of pain right now. I also do believe that, uh, we need to have, uh, the interviews from, from the key witnesses, uh, the vast majority of which I believe have been completed already. So that we're not talking about a long period of time here. We're certainly not talking about the four, six months that it often takes. You know, I, I just find myself wishing a lot lately, you know? I, I wish that there are words that I could say that would make you feel better and make the community feel better, bridge this horrible divide. Uh, I haven't found them. Uh, I wish I could somehow bring back to life, um, black men who've been shot. Um, I wish that there was a policy that I could introduce tomorrow that would promise that this kind of thing would never happen again. Sadly, I can't. And so...
What are paying for them when they go on...
Thank you, sir.
You know, what the fuck is with that? Can you not...
And so I, I, again, I, I appreciate all of you, you coming in. I'm gonna continue to lean in, I'm gonna continue to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At that, I am closing this public hearing. This is no longer a public hearing, it has been closed. And so, if there are outbreaks or interruptions, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. Um, we, we must continue to conduct the business of the city. I absolutely deeply appreciate everybody taking time out of their, um, lives to come here and share this information with us. It is extremely helpful for us to be able to, um, to do the important work of trying to right these wrongs and create a more equitable city of Minneapolis. And so, um, at this point, everyone is welcome to stay in this meeting. However, if there are interruptions and disruptions, I will have to ask you to leave. So, um, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Race Equity Subcommittee together. Thank you. So, let's begin with the first item on our agenda, a presentation, if those folks are still here, uh, on Racism, Rent and Real Estate: Fair Housing Reframed. Um, there's gonna be a series of local events, and we have a couple of special guests here to give that presentation. Um, Ms. Carol Lutowski from Mill City Consulting and Ms. Cindy Booker, the Executive Director of Sabatheny Community Center. Um, thank you guys for, uh, being patient, um, through this very, um, important and emotional, uh, testimony, and I appreciate your willingness to stay here.
And thank you, um, Council Vice President Jenkins for having us today and to the full council for supporting this series. Um, again, my name is Carol Lutowski. I'm here today as the Principal Consultant with Mill City Consulting and with, um, Cindy Booker with Sabatheny Community Center. And we just have a couple of slides. I appreciate that you guys took the time to listen to the community about the incident that happened and have... Thanks for letting us be around for that. Um, there was a handout that went out, did everybody get a copy of that?
Yes, we did.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so this year marks the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, landmark legislation that was authored by Minnesota Senator Walter Mondale that sought to remedy the pervasive and institutional racial housing discrimination through the lens of that era of 1968 by addressing segregation and promoting in, in integration. So through the multi-event series, Racism, Rent and Real Estate: Fair Housing Reframed, we're gonna use that history of and current organizing in Minneapolis and Hennepin County communities to explore the history of racial segregation in housing that led to the Fair Housing Act, identify how racialized barriers to housing still manifest today, and create a community and political will to, to make a change. So let me see if I can change this now. Nope, there we go. So together, there are about a dozen organizations that have come together to make this series happen. Um, it is being convened by the Mapping Prejudice Project, Minnesota Housing Partnership, and Mill City Consulting. All the event partners include, um, Sabatheny Community Center, Preserve Minneapolis, Central Area Neighborhood Development, um, Organization, Hennepin History Museum, Hennepin County Library, Jewish Community Action, Village Trust, University of Minnesota Center for Urban and Regional Affairs, UROC Equity in Place, the African Career and Education Resources, Inc., and the Minneapolis Urban League. And others are added daily. Isn't that a beautiful picture, though? I also want to point out that the series is financially sponsored by the University of Minnesota Imagine Fund, the City of Minneapolis, Hennepin County Common Bond Communities, Aeon Wellington Management, and the Family Housing Fund. So I want to thank you for your support, your financial support as well. So just a couple of reasons about why we are doing this. Um, here is the homeowner, homeowners loan corporation redline map of Minneapolis. And fundamentally, we're doing this series because housing is a central and urgent issue in communities throughout our region today, with tenants of color being exploited by landlords and homeownership rates for African-American households and other households of color in the Twin Cities remaining the lowest in the nation. But there are these historical antecedents to this situation. This series is gonna use the history of Minneapolis's racial discrimination in housing, the structural racism codified in government law and policy that intentionally created segregated housing landscape that economically privileged white people. Those policies, including redlining and racial covenants, are part of our past, as you guys well know. Um, and the legacy has created the lived realities of communities of color today. So we're using the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act just as an opportunity to have this conversation. And when Congress passed the Fair Housing Act in 1968, it was meant to put an end to this kind of racial discrimination and segregation, and the goal was to usher in a new era of housing equity and racial justice across the nation. Yet, 50 years later, the vision remains unrealized. Historic racial, historic racially restrictive housing covenants, redlining, Realtor practices, and white violence established and enforced racial boundaries in Minneapolis that continue to serve as the foundation for present-day racial disparities. But as we're unveiling the history that led to present-day racial disparities in our communities, we also want to reveal the history of resistance to racially, the racially discriminatory system. There were also always people, communities, organizations, and campaigns to fight against these common practices, just like today's tenant and community organizers, policymakers, organizations that are mobilizing against unfair housing practices to build power on their own terms and pressing for solutions based on community needs. So as the series progresses, we were, we'll shift from revealing the history to shining light on current challenges and ending with a conversation about the future and what we as a community can do to help remedy the problem. So through the series, we will engage a wide range of stakeholders and community members to understand our shared history, listen to the directly impacted communities, and create the political will to move forward. So a couple more slides and then you get to hear from Cindy. So these are the goals for the series. Educate the broader community about our largely unrecognized history of housing discrimination. Engage and surface knowledge from community members who have been impacted by housing challenges and discrimination. Connect past racist policies and practices to current racial biases that impact housing. Explore the benefits and harms incurred in the name of the Fair Housing Act itself. Broaden the discussion about housing by humanizing the issue and making it currently inaccessible to people's real lives. Catalyze conversation that changed the grand narrative and helped build political will and translate this awareness into action. So here is, um, some images from the first event. And Cindy, do you want to talk a little bit about how that went?
Yeah, I think the first event, um, was held at Sabatheny Community Center. I was really proud for the community to come out and be a part of the initiative. I also want to speak about the importance of all the other partners being involved in the initiative. Um, as an Executive Director, we're often, uh, provided with opportunities and, uh, or people that want to come to speak to our community instead of having our community speak with them and, and gain insight and values to what really made a community. And this is why, um, I am an advocate for this, uh, to the series and also to have the first event at Sabatheny Community Center. I just want to share with you guys, a little off-script. Um, it's not because I'm nervous today, um, but this is very emotional for me to go through a process, what I just witnessed. Um, I grew up in South Minneapolis, I grew up with redlining, and my father was shot when I was one years old. And I never had the opportunity to meet him, but thanks to the community of Sabatheny and everyone, um, around us who said they would make a difference. From those differences, they decided to create the Minneapolis Public Schools. From those differences, more and more people stepped up to become leaders. From those differences, city, county, and state decided to invest dollars in our community to make a difference. For the last 40 years, that has increasingly disappeared. And I know what you guys have in front of you, um, today, and I understand the challenges you have, but, um, when Governor Dayton, before he left, he introduced the Equity Bill that really provided opportunity to our neighborhood. And we were really able to provide jobs, training. And as the process has changed, as different people get elected, those funds become, you know, they disappear on you. Um, I'm the, um, Sabatheny is home to the largest food shelf in South Minneapolis. Each year, it costs us $400,000 to feed 11% of Minneapolis's population. We receive no government funding for that. Every day, my team has to come up with, uh, different grants, proposals, and I have to go out with different people to try to make up that difference. And some will say, Cindy, instead of doing all that work, just close the food shelf. If I closed the food shelf, do you know what that would do to our community? Do you know what that would do to Minneapolis? Do you know what that would do to Minneapolis? What that would do to the bus lines? So that's why I really hope this series can make a huge difference for people understanding what really happened in our community, for people to understand what really needs to be done. And it's not just a limit to the police force. It's not just a limit to the public schools. It's not limited to you guys. We all have to work together, and we need investments in our community because we know our community more than anyone else. And I appreciate your time, and I thank you for letting Sabatheny be part of the series.
Well, thank you both for this really important presentation. I want to say thank you, Ms. Booker, for sharing that deeply personal aspect of your own life and history. It really saddens me to hear that, but I think it highlights that, you know, the testimony that we just heard prior to your presentation, that all of these issues and systems work together. And so inadequate housing, redlining, the violence, the inherent violence that comes from corporate manipulation feeds into the realities of life for Black and Brown, low-income, poor people in these communities, and how they then, in turn, interact with police. And so none of these things are inseparable. They all have to be looked at as a whole and interrelated. And so I want to thank you for doing this series and for bringing these issues forward to the council. And I'm looking to see if any of my colleagues have any further comments to add to your presentation. And I see council member, sorry, President Bender has some comments.
Council member is fine. I just wanted to note, thank you so much for the presentation. And the map that you showed to begin the presentation is strikingly similar to our current zoning map. And as we started the process of updating our comprehensive plan, I think CPED staff did a really good job of noting that history and being very clear and explicit in their research and in the goals that we had adopted last term as a council about acknowledging the history of explicit racial exclusion in housing and tying it to our current regulatory structure that has not eliminated but instead has reinforced racial exclusion in housing in many ways. But I want to acknowledge that I don't think that the current draft of the plan goes far enough to correct those inequities, and I think many of us share that perspective and will look to community to strengthen the commitments. And so I really took to heart your comment that, you know, the community knows, you know. So I invite that, those kind of explicit solutions, but I also think that going forward, I know this council is committed to changing this map and changing this reality in every way. And I always appreciate Councilmember Jenkins reminding us when we're talking about housing that we have to think about jobs, and we're talking about police violence, we have to talk about housing, and that these issues are not separate, they are related, and it's our responsibility every time we look at a policy change or a budget decision to look at it through a lens of race equity and understand how our actions are reinforcing these patterns or disrupting them. So I just wanted to reinforce that, and thank you very much again.
Thank you, President Bender. Are there any other comments? With that, I move that we receive and file this presentation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That item carries, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
And can you just, one more thing, can you just announce the, oh, I see it's right here on the screen, announce the series and the upcoming dates that are associated with it?
Great, you want me to read through them?
Maybe you highlight the ones that you think are most important for, it seems like there's one in North Minneapolis, and I don't know the date. Just says September.
Right, we have some organizing to do around that one still. The next one that is open is going to be the Hennepin History Museum. They're going to do an exhibit, and then there will be an exhibit opening reception on August 23rd. We will also be doing some programming around that exhibit, including a presentation from the Mapping Prejudice Project people. So that would be the next one to pay attention to, and as we get details about the one in September around redlining to predatory lending, the racial wealth gap, we will certainly let you know about all these. And I will send people, here's kind of the last slide. There's information online at mhponline.org/fairhousingreframed, or also on Facebook. And that's a good sources to track the series.
And then my last couple of comments. First of all, I want to acknowledge, Ms. Booker, we hear you about the necessary support for Sabatheny Community Center.
Really nice to have.
It's an important institution to South Minneapolis as well as to the broader community in Minneapolis. And so, you know, we are going to do all that we can to help support those efforts there. And then I'm curious, is the, I know your last slide said, how do we move this awareness to action? Is there a plan to have recommendations from this work for the city council as well as other bodies, including Hennepin County and the state of Minnesota and those entities as well?
We would be happy to share what we come up with. The last event is October 25th, and that is the Future of Fair Housing. Where do we go from here? Your former colleague, Elizabeth Glidden, will be helping to organize that event with Minnesota Housing Partnership, and we would be happy to share however you want it.
Okay.
What comes out of that.
And I know that other organizations like Sabatheny will also be using the information for proposals and getting more information out to the public to, for them to gain an understanding of the challenges and how we need their support as well as we move forward.
Thank you both so much. I really appreciate all of the efforts and the work that has been being done and for you coming here today and sharing that presentation with us.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Item number two on our agenda is Resiliency in Community After Stress and Trauma: Recast, a program of the city of Minneapolis, and we're going to hear an update from them. I really just, you know, I get the trauma of the people who came here to really express their deep concern about these issues. I was hoping that they could stay for this presentation because I think this is a really important, albeit one, strategy to help to deal with some of that trauma and stress that being Black in Minneapolis, being Black in America can impart upon us all. But, you know, hopefully, we have some creative ways to get this information out to communities so that they can benefit from the really important work that you guys are about to share with us today. So with that, I'd like to invite Ms. Joy March Stevens from the City's Division of Race and Equity to join us at a podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Jenkins and council. I will just want to first start by acknowledging what's happened. As the Recast team, we're often called upon, when things happen, to hold space, to be available to both staff and to community. And it's important work, and it's work that I know that, I'll speak on behalf of the team, we're very grateful for the opportunity to do it, but at the end of the day, we're still women of color, and we're deeply impacted by these events. And so I need to offer my own humanity in this moment. I did not anticipate coming up here and shedding tears, but it's really hard to be here in this space after what we've just experienced. This work gives me a lot of hope, but I know that it's not enough to address the hurt. So I just want to offer that. So I want to acknowledge the team, so Deserolyn Cole and Ebony Adidayo are here. They're both two program managers on Recast, covering North and South Minneapolis. Christina Manichero-Villagron is not here today, but she's a program associate, working primarily on communications and some of our special projects, doing really amazing work and very grateful for it. We were going to show a video. We had actually interspersed some multimedia into our presentation because we use a lot of story to tell, the story of the work and of the importance of the work, but in the essence of time, I'm going to skip at least my video, offer to the rest of the team the opportunity to share their pieces of it and just dive into the framing of the work. So Recast Minneapolis is a federally funded program through the Department of Health and Human Services, specifically the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Following, in the spring of 2015, nope, sorry, take a step back. In the spring of 2016, the federal government made some funding available to those cities who had experienced mass protests following a shooting death of who they framed as an unarmed black man. It was really very much steered and motivated by the protests in Ferguson, recognizing that the events in Ferguson were not just unique to Ferguson, but it happened in many cities across the nation. At the time that the funding award was available, there were 12 cities that qualified, Minneapolis being the most recent city with the shooting death of Jamar Clark in November 2015. At the time, they were prepared to award up to 11 grants to sites, and so for us, it was pretty much a no-brainer to go ahead and apply for the funding. The beauty of the funding is that it does allow for significant capacity building inside of our communities. During the 18-day occupation, we learned a lot from community about how many people were showing up, holding space, who were giving of themselves, many people at the expense of their own health, their employment, their housing, in order to show up for other people, and recognizing that we had a real opportunity with these funds to help shift some of that. How do we help community care for itself? And at the same time, how do we help our internal staff, who were also struggling to be able to do their jobs effectively in communities, recognizing that they did not have the level of training around how to understand trauma and how to both deal with secondary trauma that they were experiencing, primary trauma that they were experiencing, or even relating to communities, particularly our marginalized communities who were carrying trauma on a regular basis. So in the first round of funding, eight cities were awarded a grant, Minneapolis being one of them, along with Baltimore, Bear County in Texas, Chicago, Flint, Milwaukee, Oakland, and St. Louis County. We were very fortunate to get the maximum award, which was a five-year grant and a million dollars a year to allocate to this work. One of the unique models with Recast Minneapolis is unlike a lot of other grants that may come into the city, is that the decision-making around how these funds are allocated comes from community. That was the expectation with our funders, that we build a community table who helps us define what the needs are that the program needs to address, helps us to set the goals in a strategic plan, and then helps us to implement and provide oversight to that plan. So that was pretty much the majority of the first year of that funding. We were awarded the grant in the fall of 2016, and we're now wrapping up closely the second year of the funds. In our grant application, we were very intentional, recognizing that our trauma, that certainly the Jamar Clark shooting happened in North Minneapolis, but also recognizing that systemic racism, as the root cause of the trauma our communities are facing, hits also all across the city of Minneapolis. It's not just unique to North Minneapolis. So we looked at many factors around unemployment, housing, income inequality, the presence of people of color, a myriad set of factors we looked at to help determine what were the actual areas of geographic focus that we were going to look at for Recast Minneapolis. So the neighborhoods that are listed here represent portions of North Minneapolis, portions of South Minneapolis, including Cedar Riverside, and these are the areas where we target our work for the most part. Out of the course of our engagement with our community members, we were able to lift up three core values that guide the work that we do. First and foremost, greater trust and understanding, recognizing that there is a lot of mistrust between government and community, community and government. And so we want to be able to utilize Recast Minneapolis as a vehicle through which to build and establish trust where trust has not existed in the past. So how can we deepen understanding of self and of one another across culture, across barriers, across roles and positions, so that we can find better ways to work together and minimize the trauma and the stress inside of our communities? Secondarily, increasing the capacity around trauma and around resilience, both inside of our city institution as well as outside in our community. How do we help educate our community and ourselves around what trauma is, how trauma shows up in our lives, and how do we address that? How do we build greater resilience skills and better self-care skills so that we have the ability to navigate traumatic events? And lastly, around shared decision-making. Again, I reference back that Recast Minneapolis is a community-driven program. The decision-making around how we allocate funds in the program, again, come from community, but we also want to center shared decision-making. How do we create spaces so that we can have partnerships, true authentic partnerships with community and with city staff, and making decisions around how we move this work forward? So there are a few ways within the program that we try to set those tables so that our staff and our community members are working together for a more equitable and less traumatic future for us. There are four buckets of work that basically shape what Recast Minneapolis does. Some of those buckets of work are places where we do engage staff and residents, and some of them are strictly just for the residents of the city. Deserolyn and Ebony will talk in greater detail about what's in each of these buckets. I'm just going to give you a quick sort of overview, and then they'll dig a little bit deeper and talk about also what some of that work has looked like from a practical sense and what some of the impact has been. So for staff and residents, we do center work on healing and training, which again gets back to the capacity building around trauma and around resilience, but also around the trust building. Secondarily to that, again, the shared decision-making, how are we working together as community and as city staff to actually make decisions together, both around trauma and resilience, but then also around systems and policy? How can we work together effectively to shift policy? The residents also have investments in leadership development, particularly with youth. One of the key areas of opportunity that SAMSS saw with the funding was who they determined to be high-risk youth in community. How are we investing resources into community to grow youth leadership around trauma, around resilience, and helping them to make decisions for themselves that are about creating a better future for themselves? And then lastly, around trauma healing services, we recognize the need for both access to licensed mental and behavioral health services, but then also for community cultural healers. These are the invisible people who were working alongside community, following the shooting death of Jamar Clark during the occupation. These are the people who show up in community now, following the death of Thurman Blevins. These are people who are often doing this work under resource or without resources coming out of their own pocket. So with trauma healing services, we're looking to put resources into these communities and with these individuals so that they can more effectively do the work that they're doing without harming themselves. All right. So I'm going to invite up Ebony Adidayo, who will talk through the next few slides.
Thank you. Ebony Adidayo, as Joy mentioned, I'm one of the program managers for Recast Minneapolis, working primarily in South Minneapolis. I appreciate the space today and you taking the time for the first two hours to hear public comment. It's really important to our work, and so I really am grateful for you naming and staying in the moment. My work is, I have two of the buckets for Recast Minneapolis, one of them being around shared decision-making. As Joy talked about, it's really important for our work to make sure that as we are planning our programming, that community members and city staff are with us in the process around how we're doing those things. And so for shared decision-making, a key goal for Recast is providing space and services to community members when bad things happen, such as the shooting this past weekend. We first used this model last year with the Yanaz verdict. We convened daily touchpoint calls with organizations such as the Urban League, New Creations Church, Joy Unlimited, Kinte Circle, North Point Health and Wellness, and other partners totaling about 12 to help us think about how we could best support community during that time. As a result of those efforts, as I had mentioned, we were able to hold 12, 12 partners came together, we were able to hold space for 85 residents at least across different listening sessions. We were on the radio. We were able to produce some videos, which I will let you see a little bit later, and some other efforts to really support the community during that time. We have also responded similarly with the announcement of the charges against Officer Noor back in March. We were able to convene two community listening sessions shortly after that announcement. And as a result of Saturday's shooting of Thurman Blevins, may he rest in peace, we are also... are also checking in with community organizations to see what is happening organically and how we can support these community-based efforts. We convened a phone call early Monday morning consisting of our advisory team members, city staff, and other community organizations and partners to get a better idea of how we can move forward, and some of those efforts are still unfolding in the coming days. One of the strategies and ideas that germinated from the phone call was the need to think about longer-term strategies because the stuff keeps happening. I've been here two years, for three times already, we have responded in this immediate way. And so we were trying to think about, as trauma continues to unfold, whether it because of an officer-involved shooting or something happening at the federal level, how do we support communities in the best way to build out a readiness, response, recovery protocol so we're not just reacting, but we can be more proactive, which sometimes feels really defeating because it recognizes that the trauma continues to happen until we change these systems. But what we're wanting to do, we've done a lot of community engagement with city staff and community members around what this looks like, and we're in the process of revamping a protocol that we had actually designed earlier this year to do just that. We have also had brave, safe space conversations, which have been about convening city staff together to have them talk about what's happening for them in these moments. As Joy mentioned, and I'm sure Deserlin will mention, as Black women in the city hall in these moments, I'm traumatized coming to work almost every single day. Yesterday, I had someone hold space for me because I cried maybe four times in meetings because it's not getting better. And so the brave space conversations for city staff recognize that even though we have to show up every day, we still show up in our full humanity with our full selves, and we need people to care for us as we're caring for other people. And so we have had 106 people who have participated in that throughout the Art Enterprise, and we've trained city staff on that model so that they can hold those spaces within our own city departments as well. So I'm gonna move to the next slide. We also produced a series of videos called Black Joy Videos. We worked with, out of response to the Philando Castile shooting and the verdict against Officer Noor, we were able to partner with Resma Menikin, who used this model similarly for MPD. We developed this series of videos as a tool to counter traumatic images of violence on Black bodies with images of well-known community members seeking and benefiting from mental health and wellness and self-care. These videos are online on YouTube. In the interest of time, I'm not going to play it, but I do want to highlight that they're really high-quality, and it gives people an opportunity to really look at, in spite of what is happening to us, we still have access to joy. We still have access to hope. We still have access to liberation in spite of all of the things that are going on. Next slide. I also want to talk about our healing and trauma training work.
Excuse me, can we just hear a comment from Council President?
Yes. I just want to reassure you that you do not have to hurry through your presentation, and we will all happily hear everything you have to say.
I have to pick up my kids.
No, it's okay, okay. I just want you to know that we will be here. You go.
Thanks, but no thanks.
You mean, you still have to be a Black mother in all of this?
Yes. Yeah, I still gotta do the daycare.
Then we will come back another day if you need to leave and hear the full presentation then, but we will do whatever.
Thank you, but I encourage you, and I think they're also on Recast's Facebook page. We have posted a few of them and lighted what is happening. They're also on Facebook, our Recast Facebook page, if we have not liked it. There are some things that we have been trying to support this week as a result of the shooting on Saturday. So I will move into our healing and trauma training work. We have three main areas of how we are wanting to build capacity for not just community members, but city staff to have a better understanding of how we show up when bad things happen. One of the first projects I want to mention is our History of Race projects, and specifically the immigrant and refugee work. Anyone who has been on the third floor, we are on the third floor, but who would go around the corner would see that beautiful, beautiful display that happened as a result of a collaboration with Clueys Good Space Murals and Creative City Making Program to bring a group of 10 Latino immigrants together to share their immigration experiences. Those stories created the mirror hanging that you will see. I really encourage you to go see it if you haven't. City employees have been invited to join the group to paint the mural and develop deeper relationships with community members. As a result of this project, there are six 45-minute sessions happening tomorrow, Thursday, June 28, throughout the day to dive deeper into the imagery of the mural and allow other city staff to gain more understanding of the community and the project as a whole. And we anticipate wrapping up that project tomorrow. So that project's primary geographical focus was South Minneapolis. There is another project unfolding in North Minneapolis. Working with 4,000 more creative and community partners such as North Point, Homewood Studios, Minneapolis Urban League, the MPD, we are collecting 100 oral histories from past and present residents of the Plymouth-Penn Corridor. Once those stories are collected, we will invite local artists to use the unedited raw interviews to create art that can be displayed in city hall or throughout the community. The project's kickoff event is tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Minneapolis Urban League. There will be two pop events that will be held in July to conduct and capture interviews as well, and this project, we hope, to wrap up by the end of the summer. So that covers our History of Race projects. But we also have some training that we are doing and hosting for community members, which is called our, that we're using under our Capacity Building Institute. The Capacity Building Institute is a model that we have built out to really build the capacity of community members to understand what trauma is, including historical and perpetual and structural trauma, like what those things look like, and understanding what the warning size and the effects on the body, wanting them to understand trauma, wanting to understand the healing and resiliency that we already have access to, but then also how to change systems so that these things stop happening. So that's the encompassing model. We've been able to work with a variety of trainers to provide space for community members and cultural healers and faith-based leaders and mental and behavioral health providers, people who work with youth and their families, and youth themselves to learn those different things. We held our first, we kicked off this work back in November. We partnered with Kinte Circle for their Fall Conference about understanding white supremacy's effect on the body. And we also partnered with them in their Spring Conference. We were able to sponsor people to attend something that was already happening and going on in community and that has proven results within community. We also partnered with the Black Men's Healing Conference just as recently as last week to provide people opportunity to go and participate in that conference. We have also hired trainers to provide space for community members. We started convening those trainers back in January. We had really dynamic winter sessions in spite of the snow. People still came out and participated and really had a wonderful time learning about what they can use within their communities, their faith-based communities, within their schools, wherever else, to help the people that they're working with access healing and resiliency. We're now within our Summer Series where we're doing the same things. I do want to name off the trainers that we've contracted within this work. They include Simmons Consulting, Liberty Community Church, which was formerly Kwanzaa, Abdor Razak Consulting and Social Architecture, Irreducible Grace Foundation, Rachel Martin, Roxanne Anderson, Melissa Olson, the Phoenix Rising Collective, Wilder Foundation, and Bridges Leadership Academy. And we're also looking to partner with the Minnesota Department of Health to do some suicide prevention work as well. And so the scope of the work is really, really broad because our needs are really, really broad. So far, we've had over 140 unique participants as a result of the support that we've been able to offer in this area and have had ongoing sessions throughout the summer. I really do urge you to like our Facebook page and to spread the events that we will be having on there. I want to get to our internal training. Recast has hosted trauma trainings for city staff to learn about trauma experienced in communities and to gain self-care skills to address potential sources of trauma. Throughout this series of trainings, employees will gain and have gained valuable skills and tools needed to understand different types of trauma, with some elements of training focused on immigrant and refugee communities. So case in point, we were able to partner with Clueys, which is a Latino-based organization to host a series of training, including in understanding trauma and emphasis on immigrant and refugees, and understanding the paradoxical power of healing relationships and interacting with individuals with stress and trauma. 103 city employees participated in this training that happened in fall and the winter this past year. They also did some training around secondary and vicarious trauma, meaning somebody asked before, like, the mental health of cops, like, what does that look like? We know that people who are doing this work do experience trauma because of them being on the front lines, but then their own histories as well. So just really naming that we all have work that we have to do in order to be well as a city and as a community. We're also partnering with Resma Menikin to do this cultural, thematic, and psychological first aid training, which is an evidence-based, trauma-informed approach that has built on the concept of human resilience. 97 staff will be trained in this approach by the end of the summer. So that's what I have. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Adele. Adele, I'm sorry. And, you know, I do just want to take a moment, and maybe this might be better after the entire presentation, but to just acknowledge and recognize the pain and trauma that you all go through in doing this really difficult and challenging work. And, you know, acknowledge that just because you are doing this work, it doesn't absolve you from still continuing to be impacted by the very systems of oppression that we are all engaged in trying to shift and change. So know that, you know, there is fully informed awareness around this service that you have taken on, on behalf of the city and of our community to help heal, and please continue to take care of yourselves in that process. Audre Lorde says that self-preservation is an act of resistance, so take the time to take care of yourselves as well. And with that, Ms. Cole, please.
Thank you, Chair Jenkins, council members. Just to echo the sentiments of my boss and my coworker, this work is hard, but it is my duty to give back to the community what was given to me. I am a Northsider. I'm a recipient of many Northside resources and services, and I am here because of what was given to me. And so I would be remystified and acknowledge that this is exactly what I'm supposed to be doing at this chapter in my life, and I am grateful to be here and to give back to my community. So I'm not going to deviate too much from my script because I am still feeling very raw from what happened in this room today, and that feeling's going to sit with me for a while. But I'm here to talk about our trauma-informed services. Recast Minneapolis first imagined this work through our advisory team. Our advisory team is comprised of community members and partner organizations. Many of them were listed when Ebony was speaking and when Joy was speaking. They came together to create this resource to pinpoint assets around healing in our community, because we know that communities oftentimes have, we have what it takes to heal ourselves, and so let's put it on a platform so that way everyone can access it. And so we really wanted to build up the capacity of our community cultural healers, because we know those are the individuals on the front line, always coming to the aid of community when the community has been harmed. We also want to build the capacity of traditional mental health providers and agencies, but our priority, our focus, is these community cultural healers doing this work. Our goal in this initial phase is to engage 40 cultural healers, 20 mental health providers, and 10 agencies on this map. Recast Connect funds are also a part of this work. They are used for reimbursements to providers, mainly these cultural healers building up their capacity to do this work. Funds can be used to stipend participants for coming to, like, healing sessions or venting sessions. People can use funds for Reiki and other body healing work. They can use it for any sort of trauma-informed care services. And this website is live and active, and people can start accessing resources today. In recent days, we were extremely dedicated in ramping up our recruitment of community cultural healers onto this network, following the traumatic events that have happened this past weekend. We know that these individuals are providing trauma support in community with little to no resources, and so we are very intentional in reaching out. And so I ask that you join us in this dedicated effort in sharing this information across your wards, because we know that they're out there, we know that they're doing the work, and we know that they're not being compensated for it, and we have an opportunity to do just that. Go on to our next slide.
Ms. Cole, is it possible to share with us some links or information so that we can get that out to our constituents?
Absolutely. So we can connect to you through our Facebook page, we can send you specific links as well. We have a slide at the end that has all of our links, and we could email that to you as well. I did actually have it in the presentation, but I didn't know how to get back to the PowerPoint from the website.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so our next slide is Youth Leadership and Development, and this is, I will say, this is where my heart beats the most, because we get to use the voices of youth to influence the way that we do the work in Recast under this Youth Leadership and Development work. So as we begin to imagine what this work was going to look like, one of our first steps was reaching out and working with the Health Department through the Inspiring Youth Program. We also worked with My Brothers Keepers, and that was out of the mayor's office. That was a little bit before my time, but we were able to do that work as well. We also were able to work with the Youth Coordinating Board and Youth Congress, and in fact, we are able to partner with the Youth Coordinating Board to support them in the rolling out of the My CPaaS app. That app is designated to give resources and services around mental health to youth, and so we are really excited that that will be coming out and launching towards the end of the summer. Our next steps in looking at opportunities where youth could use their voices and build the table was looking at YPAR. YPAR is Youth Participatory Action Research, and this is an innovative approach to positive youth and community development based in social justice principles, in which young people are trained to conduct systematic research to improve their lives, their communities, and institutions that are intended to serve them. We leveraged the expertise of the Youth Congress, who helped score our applications and make recommendations for us to choose our consultant, which is North News. That was an amazing experience to be in a room full of dynamic, energetic young people who had great things to say, and they in fact encouraged me to make sure that I shared all of their reflections and provided small TA to applicants that did not receive funding so that they could be in a better position the next time there's resources available for them. And that was an amazing recommendation, and we're actually embedding that throughout our other processes. We knew that it was deeply important to understand how youth define themselves as youth, define their own personal trauma, define trauma and community violence that's happening currently, understand their coping skills and practices, and what equipped them to move through that. We also wanted to understand what had been in community and what maybe has gone away, and what we can do to change that, because a lot of the youth echoed that there were resources that they anticipated being able to access, that they're no longer able to access, and it's for various reasons, and so Recast has an opportunity to provide some support. So in this slide, you'll see our five trauma troopers, that's the name that they came up for themselves, and they are going out doing one-on-one interviews, and they're doing focus groups with youth ages 16 to 25 in both North and South Minneapolis, concentrated in our Recast neighborhoods, and that was shown in our previous slide. To date, we have done 20 interviews. Our goal is to complete 75 to 100 over the course of the summer. We began interviewing youth at Henry High School, North High School, and Oak Park, and we are engaging Brian Coyle Connections to Independence, Avenues, and Little Earth Community in the next few weeks to complete interviews as well. So we do have a clip that I want to show you, that I want you guys to hear. One of our trauma troopers had a pretty delicate interview with a young man who was experiencing some significant trauma. And so one of the things that we get to do is we get to support youth, you know, we do brief after these particular interviews. And so one of the recommendations that our trauma troopers made is to have like a resource guide to give to youth after they complete these interviews, because they just couldn't leave these youth raw without anything. leave these youth raw without anything. And so we developed that process after this particular interview. And so I want you guys to hear just a short clip of a young man who completed an interview with one of our Trauma Troopers.
Yeah, trauma is something that probably like just, yeah, it's something that you always live with, it's something that like you, you know, you can't like, you can't really escape it, there's no really, like, you can't really escape it, like really. I know a lot of people try to hide their trauma and like do drugs or drink it, but like that's not really a way to escape it. It's just like, it'll just like numb the pain for a little bit, for like a few hours for a day or two, but like, it's not gonna, like you're always gonna remember, you know, it'll always come back to you, always deep pain, deep inside, and things that you'll always remember that you won't be able to ever forget, you know.
How did you, do you think you could ever get over your trauma? Like this thing you live with?
I mean, I don't think it's, I wouldn't say like get over it, but like, kind of like know my trauma and like, kind of like, I know this artist, his name is Lecrae, he got a nice quote that I like, and he's talking about like naming your wounds, and like you gotta know your wound to like name your wounds and like, you know, and like name your wounds and be able to heal your wounds, you know? You can't put a, you know, Band-Aid over a stab wound, you know? It's only gonna keep on bleeding more, so like you have to know your wounds and name them and, you know, heal them somehow. So like, who are like trying to not forget about it or not like push past, because it'll always be there? Like that's like, you know, but like just remember the mark, you know, that it's left in your life and just always try to be sensitive towards it.
So as I leave you guys with that clip, as we continue the rest of our presentation, I just want to just call attention to the fact that Recast is not the Band-Aid. Recast could never be the Band-Aid. We are just calling attention to the wound, and we're naming the wound, and we're looking at ways to address the wound. And so with your leadership, with your connections and your power, you can help us really address the wound. I'll bring back Joy.
Thank you.
So our final point in the presentation is a piece of hope. We, in the first year of the Recast grant, it was largely planning years, I mentioned with our needs assessment and our strategic plan. And so as a result of that, we were able to, we didn't spend down all of the funds that we had, and we're very recently informed by the federal government that we have those funds available to us. And so as a result of that, we, in the wake of Thurman Blevin's shooting, began to look at the budget and began to make some decisions on how we could very immediately make funds available to support the existing work. So the work that Deserlin talked about, about Recast Minneapolis Connect and the connection to trauma-informed services, we had already allocated about $170,000 to that work, the critical incident response work that Ebony mentioned, we had already allocated about $150,000 for that. But we knew that there was still a need to do more work in this coming year. So what we're sharing today for the first time ever is our Resilience 365 Fund, and the goal of this fund is to support those projects that increase trauma awareness, promote resilience, and deepen resident knowledge around policy and systems change. And so it's, and it's an additional effort to reinforce some of the work that A, we already know is happening, and an expansion of these opportunities. So this is our opportunity to invest about $340,000 directly into community-based projects that help us advance this work. And we've structured this work in such a way that there are three different tiers of projects. Some people may want to do something that's relatively small, they may want to engage their youth group, or their specific men's club that they're a part of. So we've made funding available to support those sorts of projects, about 40 projects we're hoping to fund, up to about $2,250 for budgets for that. In the middle tier, we're looking to fund up to about 10 projects for upwards of $25,000 apiece to allow for a larger scale sort of impact that someone wants to do. And then the larger sort of projects, we've framed as tsunami, which, you know, Council Vice President Jenkins and I kind of talked about that title, like how do we feel about that? But really, the ultimate idea of that is to say that these are huge systemic impactful projects. These are not smaller things we're doing, but we're really looking to make a major community impact in this. And so for those, we're looking to find at least two projects, or up to two projects, at about $75,000 apiece. So again, the idea is community-based ingenuity around this work, a lot of work that's already happening, a lot of ideas that people have already shared with us where they don't have the resources to do it. This is a mechanism that we want to use in order to get those projects funded, and we're developing a participatory budgeting process around how we're going to select these projects, how we're going to create ways for community to come in and to say which of these projects they want to support and which projects they wanted to fund. And the idea is that these projects are implemented over the course of the summer and wrapping up sometime in October of this year. And that's the piece of hope to leave this presentation with. Reiterating Deserlin and Ebony's points before, please do connect with us via email, via our website, like our Facebook page. There is ways to sign up both online, on our website, and on Facebook for our newsletter, which goes out every two weeks and talks about opportunities like the ones that we've mentioned, as well as other things that are happening in community and across our Recast network. I also offer to people that we do meet with our advisory team every other month. Those meetings are open to the public. If you are interested and you have not been plugged into the work in the past, please come out. We'd love to see you. We'd love to have your voice shaping this process and the work that we're doing.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stevens. And I'll just echo the comments that I just shared earlier, and we will hear from Council President Ender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask, can you remind the City Council of the timeline of the grant? I just wanted to, this is grant-funded work, and so what's the sustainability of the work, and what should we expect to need to resource in the future, if anything, given the status of the grant?
Yeah, so the grant started in 2016, September 2016, and it's a five-year grant. And so whatever that math is, I think it's 2021. I don't do numbers in my head really well, but it's a five-year grant, and I think it's 2021 that it ends up. Thank you. Got some nods from the audience. Love it. Love the support from the village. So we're wrapping up at the end of September this year. We'll be ending our second year.
Wow. Yeah. Thank you, guys, again, so much for this heavy lift. So with that, I am going to move that we, oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you so much, Councilmember Cunningham. Mr. Gordon, Councilmember Gordon.
Sorry. And I'm also happy to move to receive and file, but I also was, wanted to make sure that we get the presentation posted on the agenda with the meeting. I think that would really be helpful, and that would be an easy way, at least for us and others, to connect to the videos and the audio and those things and get to see the whole thing. It was a fantastic presentation and a very thorough update. Also appreciated the materials that you provided, the written materials here, too. Thank you so much.
Great. And then we'll hear from Councilmember Ellison.
Just brief comments. I wanted to thank you all for the work, and thank you for kind of persisting through in this presentation, because I myself, you know, wondered after what we experienced, whether I would have the constitution to sit through a presentation that wasn't an interaction with the public. And you all, all I had to do was sit here, and you all had to present. And so I want to thank you all for having the resilience to present and to give us this really important work. Wanted to name that. The other thing I wanted to just highlight was that the audio clip that you played, Deserlin, stuck out to me that what came to the mind of the young person who, when they were talking about how they're processing their trauma, was Lecrae, who, I don't listen to his music, but I understand that he's a musician and a poet. And that stuck out to me, because I think about the ways in which we sort of prioritize this work, and it ends up in, you know, or work of arts, works of art as a city. They end up in sort of grant-funding, funded projects, they sort of end up deprioritized. We've got three to four artists on the council here, and I just kind of wanted to name that it's, we really should be looking at how we're engaging and baking in the arts into what we're doing, because it's evident that that's really what's landing on people, whether it be music, or aesthetics, or whatever. It's not just about the look or the sound, for the sake of the look or the sound, but really it's helping people process their trauma, and that stuck out to me. So just wanted to name that. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Ellison. The arts are really deeply important, and which is why I chose to try to bring some artistic expression to this conversation that we've had today. And I will move that we receive and file this report after we hear from Councilmember Cunningham.
It was behind your car.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, I just have a really quick comment. I just wanted to thank the whole team, because this work requires immense emotional labor. We, at the city, looks to a division to somehow move racial equity throughout the entire city. This grant has been an opportunity, a really good opportunity, to be able to have some grounding and support that maybe hasn't always historically been there. But you are expected to carry some really, really heavy work, while also going through the trauma, while also going through the trauma of being women of color, particularly Black women, in an institution that is perpetuating white supremacy and asking you to be, to help interrupt that. Right? And so I just want to name that, acknowledge it, say thank you, that you are seen and appreciated. And I hope that you can hear that, and, because I just know, being city staff, that it can feel like you're underappreciated, and I want you to know that you are seen and appreciated, and all of your emotional labor and your work is, it means so much to me and to my community. So thank you. Keep fighting the good fight.
Technically, no, and I do want to just acknowledge and thank, there was supposed to be another meeting happening in this, in this setting, that started, was supposed to start at 4:00 PM, so I want to apologize to Chair Wheeler, but we will wrap this work up as soon as we possibly can. I'm sure Marcus, that they know and appreciate your love for this. But, you know, why don't you say what you need to say, please?
And I'm ready to go, your question, ladies.
Yes.
Now you got us.
No. So state your name and your address for the public record.
My name is Marcus Armstrong. Address 2901 Lindell Avenue North. I heard somebody else say Northside. I think it was you who came in. Jeremiah, Northside. Ladies, Joy, where are you? Thank you. Thank you so much for doing this work, for bringing it forward. I share the sentiment, because I am also a mental health practitioner. I own a small mental health practice located in North Minneapolis called Hope and Healing Counseling Services, to do the work that you're talking about. So I do want to connect with you. Just a couple of things. I was really elated to see there's work being done around historical trauma. There are two sides to this. So the community is being hit on two sides. You have the historical trauma coming from this end, right? That's all the things that have happened historically with housing, education, economics, the whole nine. And then you have the current traumas that are happening. So the trauma's coming from this end, and it's coming from this end. And the main, one of the main symptoms of historical trauma is internalized oppression. Internalized oppression is self-hate, which can be used to explain a lot of different things that are happening in our community. And so I definitely want to sit with you guys and meet and talk and see how I can access those resources that you have and be of any assistance to you as women of color fighting this fight. My services are available to you, because you guys need to sit down and process what you're dealing with. Okay? It's serious. I heard councilmembers saying, we have to take care of ourselves as we're doing the work. And you guys are called in to do the work, and at the same time, deal with the internalized race, excuse me, the racism that's happening in the workplace. So you're helping and you're fighting at the same time. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Absolutely. All those in favor of receiving and filing this presentation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then, before we do a very brief committee report, I want to move that we adjourn the Race Equity Subcommittee, and then we will continue with the remaining committee of the whole business before us. Do I need a motion for that? That meeting is adjourned, and I will call, order the committee of the whole. But before we move to the reports of the committee, the City Attorney's Office has requested to add an item to our agenda today, which is to authorize the City Attorney's Office to join an amicus brief in support of the City of Richfield and Law Enforcement Services. And I will ask our City Attorney, Ms. Segal, to briefly speak on that issue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, there was a Minnesota Court of Appeals decision that vacated an arbitration award involving the City of Richfield terminated a police officer for engaging in excessive force and other misconduct. The arbitrator reinstated the police officer with full back pay, reducing it to a three-day suspension. The Court of Appeals vacated that decision on the grounds of it violated public policy. And we would like, on behalf of the City of Minneapolis, to submit an amicus brief in support of the Court of Appeals decision and the City of Richfield. The Minnesota Supreme Court has accepted this case for review. It was appealed by the union.
Thank you. Are there any questions for City Attorney Susan Segal? Councilmember Ellison.
Could we just get like a 30-second primer on what an amicus brief is?
Yes. Yes, Madam Chair and Councilmember Ellison. Friends, it literally means friend of the court. And so entities with, I'm being timed here, so I'll be really quick. Entities with an interest in the outcome of a case can seek permission from the court to be heard, in essence, and in this case, to file a brief. And so the deadline for petitioning the Minnesota Supreme Court to file an amicus brief is coming up prior to the next council meeting, and we feel this is a really important precedent for the city to support as we are so painfully, you know, hurt today to hold officers accountable.
And just because I want to make sure I have clarity, so we would be signing up to support the City of Bloomington in the firing of their officer.
The City of Richfield.
Sorry, City of Richfield. Sorry, Bloomington.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Ellison, you are absolutely correct. This would be to uphold the Court of Appeals decision, vacating the reinstatement of this police officer, and supporting the City of Richfield's position. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments for Ms. Segal? Seeing none, I will move that to authorize the City Attorney's Office to join an amicus brief in support of the City of Richfield versus the Law Enforcement Services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. That item carries. And with the permission of the body, and I do want to just thank you all for your patience and diligence and commitment today to sit through some very emotional testimony that has bled into many of our scheduled appointments that we may have had. I know I certainly had to cancel a couple of meetings this afternoon, and I'm sure you all have too. And apologize to the Board of Tax and Estimation, and really state that this was a very important conversation for us to have today. And so I would ask that we suspend the reading of the And so, um, I would ask that we suspend the reading of the, the committee reports unless there are items of import that people feel we need to bring forward this afternoon. Are there any? Um, so, we have, um, we all have access to the committee reports, and, um, I will, uh, adjourn this meeting of the Committee of the Whole. All in favor? Thank you.